So I would like to call the South Burlington City Council meeting of Monday, December 19th, 2022 to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
This conference will now be recorded.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, instructions on exiting the building in case of emergency?
Great, thank you. For those of you in the room, thanks for being here. If there's an emergency, you can go out either door at the rear of the auditorium and then to the right or left to leave. For those participating remotely, thank you for joining us. We, if you are interested in speaking on an issue on the agenda, please either turn your cameras on and indicate you'd like to speak, or you can chat to me and the chair will call on you. We are not monitoring the chat for content, thank you. And Jordan, we can't see the go-to meeting on the monitors. Okay. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Hey Noah or Linda, can you guys confirm or Gabe that you, or Sue, that you can hear us?
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Thanks Sue.
Yes indeed.
Alrighty, okay, so we'll move on to item three, Agenda Review. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes in order of agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to comments and questions from the public not related to the agenda. Are there any in the audience in the auditorium? All right, how about online? Okay. We must be doing things right, right? Number five is the council's announcements and reports on committee assignments and then the city manager's report. Did you want to start, Tom?
I really just have one thing. At the last council meeting when Wreckin' Parks was presenting, they had a lovely photo of Juniper Island, and I stated that it is part of South Burlington. I just wanted, a very, very intelligent, smart friend of mine reached out to me and clarified that it is actually a state gore and that South Burlington never actually annexed to the property when we could have back in 1950. But Wikipedia states that it is part of South Burlington and our legislative district Chittenden 12, very explicitly Martin Lallon's district, very explicitly includes Juniper Island as well as that little rock outpost. I'm claiming it for South Burlington. I'm gonna go out and put a flag on it. Juniper Island, South Burlington, and that's all I have to say.
Alrighty. Megan?
Yeah, Naki might have something to say about that island and the rocky outpost too. I just wanted to thank the staff and the volunteers. Tim was out there two nights. I saw Peter Taylor here a lot, as well as Maida Townsend and Helen, of course, and I'm sure there are others. I'm just talking about when I was around. But it was a wonderful Illuminate Vermont event, and I'm so glad to see the numbers. I'm gonna let Jesse, you know, break that news, but it was just wonderful. So thank you, staff. I think our residents really appreciated it.
Okay. Tim?
Sure, thank you. I did attend two meetings last week, one with the Economic Development Meeting and then also the Energy Committee. And there was a lot of discussion over the questions asked by the Planning Commission about updates to the COP plan. So that will generate a lot of discussion and information for the future. I also volunteered two nights at Illuminate Vermont, had a great time, saw a lot of my friends that attended. And, you know, I was a traffic control person on the Heinsberg roadside and unfortunately had to give the bad news to many people who didn't read the signs that they had to turn around. Because there was no, there is no way to get through there. I just want to go to the Blue Mall, just want to go to the U Mall, sorry. Got to turn around. So, but some people were like, well, what's going on? I go, well, there's this, you know, facility going on. Just go around back in park. And they actually did. And I think then they left later. So they were like, thanks for letting us know. So, so I just want to thank the staff as well. And it was a fun thing to work and it was great to be there. And the weather, despite the snow, actually the snow, we kind of made it nicer. So it was, it was fun. And it wasn't too cold. So, thank you.
Right, okay. I also worked the, what do you call it? The Smores Bar. So that was, it was really cool, the way that it was set up and it was, came in waves and it was pretty popular. So that was fun and people appreciated that it was free. I want to just really publicly acknowledge the financial support that the Burlington Airport, International Airport gave, along with the Larkin family. They were the two, I think, in the state, I guess, we went for a grant, were the three big supporters for Illuminate Vermont. And I really appreciate that. I think that's reflective of some of our good relationships with people who live here or an airport that lives here, but we don't really control it. But they do reach out and support us on occasion. They want, actually, Nick Longo told me he really, really wanted fireworks. But there's no place here right now with all the building, with fireworks. So, but I did have a busy week last week. I had a planning committee. And I think our new, newest appointee, Donna Laban, added just some great context to their conversations. So I think that was a really good selection on our part. So we can all pat ourselves on the back. And I think they appreciated that kind of different or additional viewpoint. So, so that was good. Then I also went to the Charter Committee on Wednesday and answered questions about, oh, my role as Chair and thoughts about expanding the council and having, whether we needed a mayor or not. So that is a committee that's very engaged and asks good questions. So that was fun. And then on Thursday, I went to a wonderful meeting that Maida Townsend had invited quite a few different leaders in South Burlington. It was the Vermont Family Network. And it was really to let, I think probably lots of you are familiar with the organization. If not, I'll get you there. But it's a wonderful organization that really provides support to families who have children or individuals with disabilities or, or health concerns. And that was interesting. And then later that day, since our fearless leader to my right was tied up, I represented the city at the groundbreaking ceremony with the UVM Medical Center, as well as Snyder Braverman, to talk about their new building, one of their two new buildings, but this one in particular is the one that has 121 units of, it's market rate, but I think they're going to subsidize them or help them. It's sort of aimed at the people who come to work at the uni, the medical center and really can't find affordable housing. And then the, you know, topping, the cherry on top is that it also includes a daycare center with 75 slots from infants up to, I think it's five, maybe six. But that was really wonderful to see that sort of coming together of the medical center's vision and need for housing, as well as daycare, and the way it supports and will help us develop City Center. So that was a nice event. And let's see, what else did I do? Oh, and I worked Illuminate, I think that's it. So it was a busy week, but it was a fun week. And I think, you know, the city really has so much going for it when you think about all the different things. Just standing there and looking around City Center and seeing all those buildings and what used to be a racetrack and sort of a wetlands that was polluting the potash. It's really come a long way, baby, as they say. And it's really gratifying to see all the different buildings kind of started by our vision for the City Hall and Library and then just building from that. So it's a good week. Jesse?
Great. I agree. It was a great week last week. So yes, just to start with Illuminate Vermont, thrilled to share that on Friday night, when I, when all the staff was a little anxious about, are people gonna show up to this thing in a snowstorm? We had 750 visitors on Saturday, on Friday night, and then another 1,600 on Saturday. So when you think about the, for a first year event, that penetration into the community, bring our neighbors out is pretty great. I do also want to thank all the volunteers, all of you. A lot of our committee members participated as volunteers, which was really exciting. But I do specifically want to call out the grant we got from the Agency of Commerce and Community Development too. I think without that initial seed funding, it would have been very hard to leverage the rest of the funding. So it's a really great example of how just a little bit of state one-time money can really catapult forward community connections and community resiliency. So thank you to our ACCD partners. I also want to give a huge shout out, you'll hear much more from them tonight, but to the Public Works crews who did a huge amount to clear snow and keep that a really manageable space while also clearing snow in the rest of the city. I got to do a plow truck ride along Friday night, which was also really fun. And then just a huge, huge thanks to Holly and Alana who put so much time and effort and vision into every single tiny little detail of Illuminate Vermont. Alana will be here later on. And just huge thanks to them for the masterminding and for all the staff who came out. A couple of other updates for you tonight. On the celebratory front, Chief Burke was on Vermont Edition last week. They did a two-day segment on crime and policing in Chitting County, and he and Chief Mirad shared the mic on the second day. I'd really encourage folks to listen to that podcast. It's a really interesting conversation about the kind of uptick in crime we're seeing, but also how we address that as neighbors and community members without necessarily requiring badges and guns. So really great conversation and thanks to Chief Burke for representing us so well. We had several members of the leadership team and I had a meeting with our incoming state delegation this morning to just meet and greet, develop some relationships, talk to them about some municipal operations policies that we see moving forward in Montpelier. It was a great hour discussion and I think really built those connections that, that will benefit all of us hopefully over the session. On a few other kind of municipal logistics points, the council obviously knows this, but just as a reminder to the community, the Heating and Hot Water Service Ordinance goes into effect as of February 15th. We have, that ordinance is obviously online. We've also updated our Certificate of Compliance Form. That is online and available for developers. And we are working on a series of FAQs for folks who are looking to build new in the upcoming months. At your January meeting, I will be asking you to appoint a Building Inspector, which is part of that enforcement of that ordinance as well. Council received a brief update from me on this tonight, but just to share with you all in the community again, Colchester has indicated that they are not going to move forward with Chitting County Public Safety Authority this year, which, and likely only with fire and EMS in the future, which creates quite a financial barrier for us getting that over the finish line this year. So we met as a CCPSA board this morning. We're looking, South Burlington is going to explore how we, with the support of the CCPSA Board, how we approach funders to think about reallocating some of the grant dollars we've received for CCPSA to South Burlington, so we can start providing regional services. That obviously will have to come to the council ultimately. So much more to come on that, but I did want to share that as it was in public meeting this morning. We have a bunch of exciting things happening in early January with staffing. We have our new HR Director starting. She'll come to council and meet with you. We also have two new firefighters and three new police officers starting in January. The fire, the police officers, of course, to go to the February Academy, which is great. I do want to call out three quick things on your consent agenda before you get there. One, the, with the November vote, the several communities in Chitting County have stood up Chitting County Communications Union District. That now has to officially form and write bylaws and convene a board and do all of those initial table-setting things. So I am respectfully requesting that you appoint me to serve as the South Burlington Rep to that board only initially. Once those bylaws are set up, I suggest that we go to the community and see if there's a community rep who would like to represent Chitting County for that. Also want to thank the Public Works team. There are three different grant applications on your consent agenda, really trying to leverage those state dollars and federal dollars into our community. And then finally, just pending your approval, thanks to Donna Kinville for stepping up to serve as our Assistant Treasurer during all of our staff transitions. That's all I got.
Great. Okay, so the next item is the consent agenda and there's two, four, six, eight, 10 items, which is a lot. Disbursements, minutes from four meetings, our November financials, the 2022 Grand List Errors and Omissions list, appointing officially, I guess, Donna Liban to the Planning Commission for a term expiring June 2025, appointing Jesse Baker to serve as the initial representative to the Chitting County Communications Union District Board, approving applications for Vermont Transportation Alternatives Grant for scoping and design and construction of the Allen Road Shared Use Path, approving an application for Vermont Transportation Alternatives Grant to design, to design and construct the Bartlett Bay Road Culvert Replacement Project. That was quite a long report. Whoa. It kept going. I bet it was 35 pages.
There should be a test.
Yeah, well, I won't pass. And then approving an application for reallocation of the 2020 Homeland Security Grant for security cameras at the wastewater facilities. And finally, appointing Donna Kinville to serve as the Assistant Treasurer.
So I'll move to approve, but I have two items.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
And I have an item too, maybe to overlook.
Okay, so what's your item?
Well, the, yeah, December 5th, and I'm sorry, December's always so busy, Sue, but I caught a couple of things on page four and page six of December 5th. Instead of 575% increase taxes, which should be 5.75. That's on page six. That's in the next to last paragraph. And then on page, so let's all take a deep breath. And then page six, instead of energy issues, it should be emerging issues, just at the bottom there. And then, that's all good. The question I have is for Martha, just to know that you visited these properties to confirm that there was no structure. Okay, that was all.
Okay. Tim?
And also a question for Martha about the structures on John Fay Road. I don't understand how, so these are rental apartments that are being converted to condos? And then, well, so you have, hmm, so you're showing that you're reducing the grand list by roughly $3 million?
3.9 million, yeah.
But the condos, when they're purchased, are gonna be, they're gonna have value. Is it, how do you, do you want to come up?
The condos have value now in the grand list.
Okay, okay. So they're already there and you're subtracting the rental. Okay, got it. That's all I needed to know. Thank you. Sorry.
And yes, I did go out and look at the properties.
Okay, that was great. Thank you. All right. Any further questions? You ready for the vote? All those in favor of the consent agenda as approved and slightly amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that carries. And we'll move on to item seven, which is the FY24 Budget. And we're going to hear from Tom Di Pietro on the Public Works presentation, which will also include pennies, penny for paths and improvements to the, no, to, and the Open Space Fund.
So while Tom is setting up here, I just, this is a really exciting budget night, both community development and public works. There's a lot of public works team members here in the audience, so I'm sure Tom is going to introduce them. I just want to remind the council and the public that all of our FY24 budget documents are on our website. If you go to the city's website, the Finance Department page, and then the FY24 Budget, all of the line item budgets, roll-up budgets, presentations are all there for your perusal. And of course, for the council, this is, this is really an opportunity for you to hear from our leaders and ask questions, but also this will become your budget. So if there are things you want to change or see or add, or different analysis you want us to look at, we're happy to take that during any time during these budget hearings. Hi, Tom.
Hello. Good evening, everybody.
Hi there.
So Tom Di Pietro, Director of Public Works. I'm gonna introduce the rest of the team shortly here, but I'll, I guess let me start with that. And I'm just gonna go to my first slide to do it. So we have 39 employees in Public Works. We make up about 40% of the expenditures that are in the FY24 Budget when you add in the enterprise funds. And so here's a very quick overview of our staff. And I'll start with our director or Deputy Director of Operations, Adam Kate, who's joining us online this evening. Can you see my mouse on the screen? Here, go ahead. Does Adam want to show his face?
He texted me saying.
No?
He texted me saying his videos might be a little choppy coming in, just a heads up.
All right.
You could see the, the large number of employees that Adam oversees within Public Works, majority of our maintenance staff. Also, with me to my right here is Erica Collin. She is our Deputy Director of Capital Projects. She's gonna be presenting on the Penny for Path and Open Space Fund portions of the presentation this evening. And then behind me, in no particular order, we've got our Deputy Director of Water Resources, Dave Wheeler. Give him a wave, Dave. We have our newest member of the team, Marisa Roraba, who's our stormwater superintendent. Jay Nadal, who is our drinking water superintendent. And Bob Fisher, who is our wastewater superintendent. I think I got everybody. Great. It's just one thing I wanted to point out. So I sort of color-coded these. We're doing pretty well right now as far as having positions filled. There's only three open positions of the 39 current. So feeling pretty good about that. So again, a very quick overview of the department. Like I said, this is highway, parks maintenance, and then stormwater, wastewater, and drinking water. So I wanted to give you an idea of the infrastructure that is within Public Works. And so we put some numbers up here. You know, for our 39 employees and 20,000 residents, we've got over 2,000 water valves, 120 miles of drinking water pipe. We have 32 wastewater pump stations, which is the most of any municipality in the state. About 18 miles of force main, 75 miles of gravity pipe, almost 80 miles of stormwater pipe. We maintain about 86 miles of road, about 50 miles of sidewalk, 21 miles of shared use path, 12 and a half miles of on-road bike facilities, and 367 or so acres of park and open space, depending what you count. So quite a bit of space, quite a bit to do, quite a bit of infrastructure to maintain. So I'm gonna go through each division and go through sort of the template that I think you're used to, that you've seen from other divisions and departments so far, go over some successes, highlight of the budget proposals on the revenue expenditure side for each, talk a little bit about what's in the capital improvement plan and what we're requesting this year, and then highlight some emerging issues and kind of spotlight kind of a positive thing within that division. And then I'll pause at the end of each section here for Q and A. So first up, I've got highway and parks.
Where is that? Is that Grand Park?
It is. Good job, Tim. So a couple of successes in fiscal year '22 and so far in '23. We did quite a bit of local road paving in '22. I'm not gonna read that list, but it's at least a portion of all of those roads, or if not the whole thing, and line striping. In fiscal year '23, we've done section, we've paved section three of four on Dorset Street. That is from Garden Street to Aspen Drive. That was recently completed. And wanted to also mention repaired a section of shared use path in Simanski Park near Stonehedge. So council included a new line item for this fiscal year. It was $30,000 for maintenance of paths. And we repaired this and a section of Nolan Farm Road. There was a root causing some issues with the shared use path. So we spent that budget up real quick this year. Get to a request for more there in a moment. Yeah. So it's wonderful to be able to have the resources to do that. Like, stop, well, I'm getting ahead of myself here, but we, in the first two months of the year, we kind of used those up to correct those two issues. So got more identified for the future as well. But let's see, back to the presentation. So on the highway and parks side, I've got FY22 actuals, the current year fiscal year '23 budget and what we're proposing for '24. You're gonna see a decrease there. That is primarily due to a grant. Previous years had grants, paving grant, that we are not proposing to get in '24, although you never know, but it is not currently in the proposed budget. Moving on to expenditures, so I've broken out the highway and the parks maintenance as shown in the budget books that everybody has here. Couple things I want to call out, and again, you've heard this from other divisions. So a lot of employee benefits were shifted from the admin line items directly into the division budgets. So for the highway budget, that's another $660,000 roughly of why you see that, that number got so much larger there. That's just from shifting health insurance, pension, et cetera. We've included another $15,000 or requesting another $15,000 or consulting services line item. This is primarily to help with public requests for traffic counts, vehicle speed measurements, intersection analysis. We get quite a few requests from around the city, and we're looking for a way to better respond to those. So one of the things that Erica and I are working on is a way to prioritize those requests. But once prioritized, we also want to make sure we have the dollars in the budget to actually do a little bit of engineering analysis to kind of figure out what's going on, where we're gonna move those forward. Another small note, we kind of reallocated some of our software. So there's a chunk of our software fees that the highway division pays and then other divisions pay them back. So when you look through the budget, you'll see a big increase in that line item. It's just the way we've allocated software. And then what I mentioned, so we're requesting or proposing a $10,000 increase in that bike head maintenance line item. We'd like to do a little bit more with that. We've got a variety of things identified we'd like to move forward in coming years. So some items.
And that's separate from penny for paths?
It is. So Penny for Path does not pay for maintenance.
Yeah, all fine. Okay, good.
That is new paths, nothing maintenance-wise.
I think we had asked you to start putting it in the budget, so thank you.
And then primarily in the parks expenditures, it's just that shifting of the benefits from admin over to parks is just the big change in numbers you'll see there.
Yeah, that's what.
May I ask a question on that slide? So I've seen the increase from 23 to 24, about 1.2 million, and you're speaking to about half of that increase from the shift. Do you have a general idea of the other half of that 1.2 million?
Yep. Pull out the big red binder in case we got specific line item questions. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Tom. I can come back to that next time, too. I'm assuming you probably don't have this in front of you, but this is on the finance page of the website where you can go and you look at all the line items, each one. I meant to count up how many line items we have in Public Works. It's quite a few. It was, we went through to build the budget. But I think you're gonna see quite a bit in the, in the, well, if you look in the top part, so it's broken out now too, which is nice. There's the capital portions broken out, operating, and then staff portion. I think you're gonna see the majority of those increases up in the kind of the admin piece there, salaries and things of that nature. And let's see, as I go through the different line items, I have a slight increase in winter salt and in fuel, because fuel prices have gone up. So you'll see a couple of line items related to fuel, another $17,000 there.
Although hopefully they, they have gone down and they'll stay down. So maybe you'll have budgeted enough.
Yes, hoping.
You're the right number.
Yeah, I mentioned the 10 grand bike head, and then I've got the tree care line item here. That's just. That's just our standard line item, the arborist uses. You'll see an increase in that one as well. Okay, thanks. A little bit about what is in the highway and parks capital improvement plan or our CIP. So one of the things we're just getting started on is an expansion of the Public Works facility. We need some additional storage for equipment, so it's under a roof. We're proposing to also add electric vehicle charging stations. So we're pretty excited about that as a next step to electrifying our fleet. We need the charging stations in place. We have a variety of vehicles that we think we may be able to go electric with, kind of the small pickup trucks and just kind of the run around town vehicles. Like the vehicle I use, for example, a little Ford Escape. We could convert those over time to electric, as long as we have a station to charge them at. And as time goes on, we can also look at some of our bigger vehicles. We've already been looking at kind of the smaller tools and equipment as well. So that's exciting. And then our Public Works facility is within our, it's a three acre site, but it's covered under our MS four permit. And so we're proposing to do some stormwater treatment practices on the site as required by that permit. It'll help us meet some of our targets for phosphorus reduction. We have some significant fleet purchases in there. So proposing to replace a sidewalk plow, a plow truck and a mower. We had two additional sidewalk plows in the budget, which we moved to a future budget year to keep overall costs down, but we do have two sidewalk plows that are sort of up in their schedule. We try to keep those in a seven to nine year rotation, so they're in good working condition. We were comfortable bumping those another year or two at the moment, so we kind of push those back. And paving in our capital improvement plan. So we're looking at here is paving of local roads in FY twenty four, and then the final section of Dorset Street in FY twenty five. So that final section of Dorset Street is going to be quite expensive. We are thinking maybe around a million dollars. So once we get an engineering cost estimate, we may hold back some dollars in FY twenty four paving to make sure we can cover that in twenty five. Ash tree replacement program. So at the moment, we were looking at originally like a hundred and fifty thousand dollar request, but we've pared that back at the moment to fifty thousand to replace our, we have nearly six hundred ash trees still in the city right away. So we'd like to make a little more progress replacing those before the Emerald Ash Borer comes in and kind of wreaks havoc and kills those trees. And then our signal replacement. So back on October third, you may recall, we were here talking about replacing all the signals on Dorset Street. So additional funding for that project is included here in FY twenty four per that conversation.
Yes, yeah. I know that the Natural Resources and Conservation Committee, that they have been actively seeking to find something instead of the tree replacement program that they came forward requesting some ARPA funds from the council for. Can you provide some additional information regarding, you know, that negotiation between our arborist and the NRCC as far as the tree replacement program versus the treatment, which is much less than fifty thousand dollars?
Sure. So I will note, there's a fourth grant that wasn't on your consent agenda this evening related to this that Mr. Wheeler's working on. So I don't know if it'll be next meeting, but you'll see some information about that in upcoming meeting to see if we can bring in some grant dollars to help pay for this. But it's been difficult for us to put together a solid plan. We need, because of the costs associated here with it, and knowing whether we're going to be working with a fifty thousand or a hundred fifty thousand dollar budget really changes. At a hundred fifty thousand dollars, we can run through a replacement program in like six years. If that's fifty, obviously, that's considerably longer. And so we've been trying to find ways to add treatment in. We're still hesitant to recommend a large scale treatment. We're thinking we're going to pick some select areas where the trees, the ash trees are in very good condition, and perhaps make a suggestion or proposal that that's where we focus those efforts. But I don't have anything yet, and I don't want to say more than that. We need to circle back with the committee and talk a little further with them on this issue.
Great, and I have a second question. And I've already emailed you about this. And you've let me know that several neighborhoods are very fond of having kind of the radars for the speed in, you know, sensitive areas. And I'm thinking about White Street with Chamberlain School. I'm thinking about Proctor Avenue with Rice High School. And there might be other places that you would suggest as well, since you're a better place to know where those residents are, you know, reaching out from. And you had said five thousand dollars would be kind of the cost of those, you know, small signs that would read the speed of the cars. Is that something that we could include in this budget? And I just wanted to put it out there for us to think about, because I, you know, we all... Go ahead.
I thought I remembered reading it in one of the presentations.
So we do have those included at this point in the CIP for White Street. I don't have other.
The radars?
I think I added that in when we did the CIP. I put a little extra funding in there.
Good, okay. All right.
So they're, I think, I'll go back and double check, and if they're not, I'll clarify that with you. But I believe I included them for White Street in the CIP for that extra, if it was five grand, yes. I don't have other locations in mind at the moment, but that kind of gets back to that consulting line item where I really want to have a way to take all these requests, prioritize them, make a decision about what needs to be done, and then fund them through a capital program over time in a very kind of linear and predictable process.
Fabulous. And I know that there were some issues with the battery. Is it going to be solar powered? Is there going to be a way so you don't have to come out every week to change the battery?
That's part of the expense. The ones we have now are battery powered. Those batteries last three days. We'll see if Adam makes a face when I say that. We got to replace them. So it's constantly going back out and replacing batteries, five days. But yeah, when we have this, if we install them with solar panels and the batteries, they, obviously, we don't have to maintain them. But it's just an added expense, and our current equipment doesn't have that. We can move them around.
Okay, but every five days, that's an added expense, too, I would think.
Absolutely, but it's what we have at the moment from an equipment perspective. And it allows us to move them. It'd be more difficult to move them around if they had solar panels attached.
Okay, so the one on White Street would be moved potentially? Wouldn't be, it wouldn't be permanent?
That's proposed as permanent.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, carry on.
Yes, okay. So resources requested. I have kind of mentioned some of the line items already, but I guess the big request from the highway and parks maintenance perspective is the addition of a parks maintenance staff person. We are working to summarize and sort of total up our additional areas of park acreage and sort of the time it takes us to maintain all the city's parks. And then what we see on the horizon is new developments come online, and that infrastructure, that park infrastructure is turned over to the city. So we'll have that summary for you in the future. But recently, I did add up the city's road mileage to talk about, and just kind of demonstrate how we're going to be looking for sort of labor side-related requests this year and next, because of the additional road mileage. It's just one example, and that comes along with sideways sidewalks and things of that nature. We have not added an employee in the highway division since two thousand. That's as far back as I went and looked. We did add some stormwater staff when we created the stormwater utility in two thousand and five and six, and we recently added a horticulture specialist. But otherwise, sort of the numbers within the highway department remain static. Similarly, in parks, other than the horticultural specialist have remained static over many years.
Well, this is the additional parks maintenance staff person. Would they be able to, or is that in a study? Be able to sort of proactively estimate, let's say we find some open space that we want to buy, and we buy it, and it's eighty acres. There's a cost to that in terms of the maintenance of that. Would this person or someone in that department be able to say, as we discuss the purchase of something, that our estimate for maintaining that piece of property and mowing it or whatever it needs to be done to it would be acts? So we kind of know going in?
Yeah, it's a really good question. So that's something we're moving towards. We started moving towards it this year. In fact, if you look in the CIP, there's a little box at the top that talks about sort of maintenance and what we think it's going to cost. We started to fill that in for some things. We want to do a better job of that next year for future CIP projects. But that, those type of estimates would be done by myself or Erica or Adam or, you know, whichever our superintendents, I guess, the projects related to. We're trying to figure out the best metric for doing that. I know Erica had pulled some information nationally, but we just haven't gone back through to pull that all together yet. But we are headed that direction.
Well, that include, you know, parks and open spaces that developments put in in their proposal, and then along with the roads, you know, six years later, or whatever it is, the city, they bequeath it to us with all the carrying costs, which is, you know, great. But then there's all this carrying costs that we haven't necessarily funded or thought about. So you'll be able to, that would be included in that conversation?
That's a great point, because we were talking on a CIP level. But if we are accepting private infrastructure as public infrastructure, we need to determine the point at which we have that conversation. So we'll be able to make those estimates in the future, once we have a little more time to work through it. But yeah, when, when do we have those conversations, I guess?
Well, I think it would be helpful before we accept the gift of a little dog park or a playground or something to know what our responsibility is and the cost and liability and that kind of stuff. Because it could add up if every new development has, I don't know, a couple acres of stuff that they... Yes, yes. But that's just as one of those pieces. That's how we get all those new roads that we maintain. You know, and I recall our conversations with Stonehouse. Is that, is that what it's called, Stonehouse off Heinsberg Road? And their roads were too steep and cobblestone, excuse me, too steep, too narrow, and we opted not to take them over. Although most developments, as I understand it, we do after a period of time.
So if I could just jump in from, I just want to remind the council that this is part of why we have Erica. Now, Erica was a, Erica's position was a position we added in, you all added in in last year's budget, trying to connect that capital infrastructure, whether we are building it or the private sector is building it, and we're taking it on to what the ongoing investments are going to be needed over time and really embed that in Public Works initially. I think it is an open question how we, at what point in a permitting or land use planning process we have those conversations with the private sector developers. But certainly, as Tom alluded, we're doing that actively now. You know, Tom spent a lot of time and Erica spent a lot of time with a lot of thinking about the bike ped bridge and what that's going to cost to maintain over time. So we're very clear with the community about what those needs are going into that kind of capital investment.
Right, but there's all these little things that really can creep up, and all of a sudden, it's...
The tipping point we've been talking about.
The tipping point we've been talking about for years. Yeah, yeah.
And as time goes on, I hope to have more charts and graphs like this to show you how we've added over the years. We're just starting to pull that information together in this budget cycle, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
Let's see, a couple of emerging issues. So I think I already mentioned it, but paving needs, Kennedy Drive, section four is going to be very expensive. It's planned for fiscal year twenty five. Obviously, we're here to talk about twenty four. But we may need to hold back some paving dollars in twenty four to help fund that in twenty five. And then we're working on updating a citywide pavement condition assessment. Erica and others have worked on getting us the software in-house and getting out and kind of reevaluating roads, so we can see kind of how we're doing on a citywide basis and how our roads and streets are doing from a pavement perspective. I mentioned the parks employee request in FY twenty four. So again, in the highway division, I also mentioned that we're going to more than likely be coming back in twenty five and looking to add somebody there, because it has been a while, and that'll help us really deal with the things like line striping and pothole filling and things of that nature. SG management plan, we also already talked about. I don't want to belabor any of these since we've covered them, but those are some of our emerging issues. And our spotlight issue, so very happy with this slide. Due to investment in our equipment and staff training, things like that, we are really trying to drive down how much salt we use in the winter. While obviously maintaining, you know, safe roads for everybody. But if we can buy equipment that allows us to scrape the roads better, for example, it requires less salt for us to actually melt off what's left. So in the photo here, you see the orange plow, but it's the plow behind the plow. It's that little black thing there. It's like these individual little fingers that stick down and get in all the pavement grooves, and they really help scrape the ice and snow off the road after the main plow. And that allows us to reduce the application rate of salt. So on the chart there, you can see what we've done by winter, and I've got kind of a three-year rolling average as well, because, you know, winters are highly variable. But since twenty fourteen, we've really been able to drive down the cost of this per lane mile. So that's something we're pretty happy with, and we're going to continue those efforts. And as we replace equipment, we'll, we'll do more of this in the newer equipment.
I thought that was really neat. I read that aloud to my husband when I was going through this.
Sounds terrible.
So that was our highway division. I guess I'll go back here for a second unless there's anything else in highway and parks maintenance. Otherwise, I'm going to move on to our stormwater division.
Oh, Bob?
Just going through the CIP for highway, I didn't see a project for Spear Street widening, which was, last year I had asked for it to be moved on twenty seven, twenty five, well, twenty seven and twenty eight, twenty five.
To twenty?
And I just didn't see it. I didn't know if I missed it. It could be there. Just wanted to clarify.
So I do not know if I have a Spear Street widening project. Well, I have, we've got a path in there, but I don't know that I have anything for widening of Spear Street proposed for FY twenty four. We've got quite a bit in there on the bike and ped side, I guess I...
It's been historically in the, and seemed to have get moved out.
Right.
And it got moved out, and now it's gone. And from Swift Street to the Sheldon Line, it's not thirty one feet as it's supposed to be all the way. And that is the bike and ped. Now, I'm doing this as a resident.
Maybe you should come up to the, well, a knowledgeable resident.
So I'm just talking as a resident.
Can you, will you turn the green?
Little button. Well, it has to be bright green.
Oh, bright green, wow. So Bob Britt, three items scored, and just that, that road is the number one commuting route, most traffic for bicycles, for commuters, for transportation. And we are trying to build a parallel path that is non, that's off-road, that's, you know, through the Hubbard Park and through, you know, the new Spear Meadows all the way through South Point and South Village. So that's progressing well, but that road is used by so many people, so many connections to neighborhoods. It needs traffic calming, because people go forty-five, fifty on a thirty-five mile an hour road. But it's, I just wanted to see if it was in the CIP anymore, and if it's not, sort of why not?
Okay, thank you for raising that. Is now a good time to comment on that?
Yeah, so it is no longer in the CIP. I think it's because we're talking more about the off-road facility for bikes, but that is certainly something we can go back and discuss. If that's still the committee's desire, if that's still a priority, we have quite a bit in there. And we're kind of jumping between the highway and the bike and ped.
Yeah, yeah. When we get to that, why don't we remember? Bob won't let us forget.
Anything else on the highway parks maintenance side?
Nope.
All right, so I'm going to jump over to our stormwater utility. Stormwater is an enterprise fund, right? So not general fund. So there we go. Again, following the presentation format for key successes in fiscal year twenty two and then so far this year, we have finished up the Muddy Brook culvert replacement project that is on our border with Williston Kimball Avenue. So we replaced the failed culvert that had caused a shutdown of the temporary bridge. And that included an additional shared use path to connect over to a future path in Williston. So great project, we're very happy with that. There's a photo of it on the bottom of the screen there. Spear Street gravel wetland, that is a large public-private partnership stormwater project with the Burlington Country Club off of Spear Street. The photo on the right is sort of construction phase of that, so that's gravel constructed wetlands dug out. Uh the photo on the right is sort of construction phase of that, so that's gravel constructed wetlands dug out. Now they're putting in the stone, so the water will flow through all that stone, good treatment, uh and there'll be wetland plants and stuff put on top of that stone layer eventually. Uh but that was a great partnership, uh we have paused construction on there for winter, we'll finish that up in the spring and summer. Uh and received about three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in grants. Uh we received over eight hundred thousand dollars in grants to do engineering work associated with the three acre rule or the three acre permit. Uh so that is some projects that are city, um and then again, a number of public-private partnerships with condo associations and businesses. Where a permit was issued uh to both entities. And just wanted to make a note that all of these things together are really a big part of what we're doing for climate resiliency. So, you know, slowing the water down, treating it, dealing with flood issues, making these culverts, uh whenever we replace them bigger. Uh allowing for aquatic organism passage, things of that nature, uh so I know we've talked about it at council before, council's talked about it quite a bit. But I think the stormwater division and their work does, does a lot to improve our climate resiliency.
I skied this Spear Street gravel pit today, I almost went down the hill. But I could see the gravel at the bottom, it was kind of like exposed and I didn't wanna hit that on my cross countries and then fall face first into it, so. I'll wait till there's more snow, but you created a really good, you know, obstacle there to, on the golf course with your skiing, so thank you.
There will be plantings and fences and things of that nature. So uh stormwater budget again, same format uh as highway, there's really no major differences. Uh the reduction here in revenue is associated with just grant revenue between what was uh anticipated in twenty-three and proposed in twenty-four. Depending how construction falls, a lot of the time, uh where that income actually comes in may be in either fiscal year, but that that's the major difference there. Uh similarly with stormwater expenditures, uh any change there is just due to capital project spending, so the projects go to construction, obviously. We're proposing, uh we have some going on in twenty-three, not as much in twenty-four, uh so there was no, nothing that jumped out there that I felt I would note on the slides. Um what is in the stormwater C I P? Uh so again, as I mentioned, a lot of stormwater treatment practice design, uh we still have these flow restoration plans in our stormwater impaired watersheds. Lake Champlain phosphorus T M D L, so we have to reduce the amount of phosphorus leaving the city, entering the lake. A whole lot of engineering and design associated with those types of projects is ongoing. In F Y twenty four, we've got three projects that we believe will be going out to bid for construction, um it's kind of re. Uh expanding and rebuilding uh existing stormwater ponds, uh two on Kennedy Drive and one off Route seven, the Bartlett Bay Stormwater Treatment System. That was actually the city's first capital project when we started the utility, uh we have a project whereby we're gonna bring additional water to that area. Kinda on the other side of Bartlett Bay Road, so that's exciting, we've been working through some right of way there, uh we're about wrapping that up. Uh engineering and design associated with the culvert under Bartlett Bay Road, you can see in the photo there, it's perched, it's undersized. Um this has been on our list for a little while, a number of years really, to to get the engineering work done, uh we've had some preliminary work done. I think you probably saw that in the grant application I referred to earlier, but so that is on our F Y twenty four to-do list, is to really get into the engineering and design of that. Uh outfall repair, there are requirements in our M S four permit to stabilize outfalls around the city, so we've got um some money set aside for that. And of course, some fleet purchases in stormwater, uh replacing one of our vacuum trucks, that cost is going to be split with the wastewater division. Replacing a street sweeper uh in a one-ton truck.
Is that um also uh used with Shelburne, do they rent it? Is it that piece of equipment, the vacuum truck?
Yes, um we do still work with Shelburne and kind of will send our vacuum truck and employees out and then bill them for kind of cleaning storm drains or street sweeping, so yes.
How old is our vacuum truck now that we have?
Oh boy, Adam, are you still there? That's the level of detail our operations manager may have to answer for you, or I'd have to open our large fleet plan.
Yeah, the, we have two actually, and the oldest one that's slated to be replaced is a two thousand eleven.
So I heard we had two?
We have two and it's it's from two thousand eleven, so it's about eleven years old.
Okay, so they need, one of them needs replacing, is that?
Uh I think our newest one is an eighteen and the older one, as you can imagine, it lives in a wet environment and the whole, the machine. Constantly works both in um wastewater and in stormwater and it's a wet environment, so that typically they tend to. Rot from the inside out just because of the nature of, they do, so um it's, we endeavor to try to replace our stuff at eight years. And so we're, we're actually beyond that with this vehicle, um we may hopefully. Replace it next year, but with supply issues, it may not happen, just because there's such a long lead time with these specialty vehicles, so. But we're trying to get it in the queue now.
Is this the kind of truck that has the, the big white pipe that is down in front of it that you use to put down in the street? But you also use that in wastewater as well?
So that's why we're splitting the cost of that expensive piece of equipment between each fund.
Does it do more work for for wastewater than it does for stormwater?
Uh I would say it's equal, I mean, we've got, we use to clean pump stations, you know, sewer lines as well, there's a hose that cleans out pipe on the front of it too, that big spool.
Yeah.
In front of the piece that goes down.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Um let's see, so talking about resources requested now, so in stormwater, a very modest request for a rate increase, one point six four percent. Uh the chart there, uh I know some people like to talk dollars and some like to talk percent, so if you like to talk dollars, it's the blue line and the left axis. If you like to think in percentages, is the, I guess that's purple on my screen and uh the right axis. Uh but you can see, stormwater has generally had uh small rate increases over time. Uh part of that is the grant funding we've been able to secure for stormwater projects, which we'll talk about in a second. Uh but this one point six percent increase, uh that would make the proposed rate for F Y twenty four, seven dollars and forty-four cents. Per E R U or equivalent residential unit, um and that would be an annual increase of a dollar forty-four cents for typical homeowner. Um emerging issues on the stormwater side, uh so we had three streams that were recently. Um classified as chloride impaired, uh Engels B, Potash and Centennial Brooks, so now they're on a list to receive a T M D L. Uh so that's something we're keeping our eye on, certainly, um and then uh compliance with the three acre permit, I mentioned it earlier. Some of those deadlines are fast approaching, I think one of them is coming up in January, um and so that impacts not only. Uh also on the municipal side, but also a lot of private property, uh certainly around South Burlington and around the state of Vermont as well.
And where is the chloride coming from?
Uh generally speaking, it's understood to be uh salt application, application from winter de-icing. Um and that's, of course, not just roads, a lot of private property does similar, so. And uh again, we alluded to this a minute ago, but uh one of the reasons we're able to request such small rate increases on the stormwater side. It's just the success that the stormwater division has had obtaining grant funding, so just under thirteen million in grant funding since. Uh two thousand five that uh the division has been awarded, uh so really happy with that and hopefully these grants you approved to apply for tonight will just keep adding to the total. Let me stop there, any stormwater questions?
Do you know, do they use salt at the airport or do they have something else?
I don't know what they use at the airport.
Glycol for de-icing, um but you know, their parking lots, I would assume they use salt as well, just like everybody else does, yeah.
Yeah, is there any um kind of educational initiative occurring around that?
So there is some, uh we've certainly talked to various private property owners about it. Um a solution to that has to include private property, so when I say solution, sort of reductions, um and it's gonna take a number of years too. Uh but you'll see, as you walk around, if you look this winter, kinda the, after a storm, those parking lots in the city that are kind of white from salt application. That's kind of an overapplication of salt, um and so there is an important education component there, but yeah. And that may be something that we're required to do in a future M S four permit, um and thing we've talked about and done a little bit of already.
Thank you. Can I just ask, um has there been, maybe I should suggest a discussion or a. Consideration at some point for all of these special um enterprise collections of money? That um we also, I know in some of the charts, we're the lowest of. Chittenden County or the state or something, we charge very little, which is great. But we don't seem to have a um a funding mechanism for replacement of things that. I thought we had, I mean, I, I was under the impression that our enterprise funds. Really were there to pay for, so we didn't really have to bond when we needed to build a new facility, but that's not the case. And I'm just wondering if we should consider, you know, as a a community. Um a, a way to start saving some of that money, so the bonding can be less.
So I'd be curious your thoughts on that, Tom, I think the council has started doing that this year with the capital reserve policy. Which enables us to roll C I P dollars year to year and not just return them to fund balance. The enterprise funds do have their own, own fund balances that are, in theory, exactly what you're talking about, our ability to. Um invest in capital without big spikes in rates when we need those investments made. I think the challenge is especially for things like wastewater, um those dollar figures are just so significant. That the, the dollars we would have to be accumulating pre-taking on debt service. To, you know, raise thirty-four million dollars, for example, to do this upgrade are are significant, but I think the step that the council took to do the. C I P reserve policy will help us offset some of that and smooth out that either. Uh tax rate need or, or utility rate need over time. Tom, do you have a different?
No, I guess I would agree, and that would be a great conversation to have, uh to date, we haven't done that in a major way. Uh you know, the, the fund balance in wastewater right now is about two million dollars and uh Jesse mentioned the cost of some of these capital improvements, so. I would say if we were going to do that previously, we would have had to be talking rate increases pre- um before now.
Oh, yeah.
And we haven't been, but we can certainly um change going forward and now that we've sort of revamped a little bit our C I P process, I think. Uh we can do that in a much better way too.
Yeah, I mean, I think over time, you just have to collect a little bit, it helps, I mean, cause if, you know, we build a new plant. And we don't need another one for twenty-five or thirty years, so. We don't necessarily have to be at the bottom of the rate for the state. In my mind, I mean, it it's great, but I also think. The investment is, especially as we grow, I mean, we want all this industry and homes and things and so. Some of our needs e- expand faster than other communities, it seems.
I just was looking up the propylene glycol and couldn't we have our economic development committee reach out to our community businesses? And encourage them to switch from salt, including home-based businesses, to this propylene glycol, it's, I just. Yeah, I think it could be a nice way for them to, it's in within their charge.
Sure, I wouldn't be opposed to having them get.
I'll just mention, the airport has a collection system uh for the propylene glycol, that just doesn't get discharged to streams, it goes through and uh. I think it's an infiltration gallery, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah.
Yep, so it's, it's not the kind of thing that you would just wanna spray and let sort of wash off, I think you'd be trading sort of one pollutant for another. Um and I'm sure there's a cost component as well.
But that's for de-icing, I think, what do they use on the runways?
That's.
Probably some kind of chloride.
Yeah, probably some kind of salt. I will, I will find out, I can call Nick and find out, I don't know, we've never really talked about what is applied to the runways.
I don't know, it says it's for good for streets, it's pet save, I don't know, it's not just for de-icing what I've seen here.
What, what's, where do the run, where do the runways drain to, do they drain back towards Potash Brook or on the other side?
Uh large properties, so Centennial Brook, some of it goes to the Winuski, I know some of the um. Overflows go towards Winuski River, towards our airport Parkway plant, uh some of it goes towards Muddy Brook, so depending where you're standing on that giant property, yeah.
Big piece of property.
But so I think this is a good conversation to have, and we may be having it sooner than later anyway, due to the impairments, the chloride impairments in our streams. Uh so we can come back with more information on this type of thing. I'm gonna keep going then, uh into the wastewater division, uh so starting off with our kind of key successes uh recently. Uh so in F Y twenty-two, uh three pump stations uh got refurbished, Oak Creek Village. Uh got some new pumps and larger diameter and pipe to improve flows out of there. And then we also did work in Valley Ridge, that's completely rebuilt, you can see that with so much of our infrastructure, you know, you don't see what it is. From the ground level, cause a lot of it's underground, so that's just the control panel huh out front. And then um a pump station on Spear Street rebuilt with new panel and controls. Um back in April, uh Bob and I were here talking about a need for repairs at our headworks building in Airport Parkway. Uh so since then, those repairs have by and large been completed, uh we were talking this morning about some repairs just that are left in the grit chamber and some welding. Uh but that was successfully done, so we're pretty pleased with that, that'll improve throughout our processes, kinda be able to screen that material out right as it enters the plant. Uh doesn't foul up processes and pumps and things later on in the, in the treatment process. Moving on to revenue, uh so pretty good increase in revenue uh shown for F Y twenty-four. Uh a lot of that is a reserve transfer in for engineering work associated with the Bartlett Bay plant um upgrade. Uh but also, we are anticipating some additional revenue uh in wastewater due to development in the city, uh we've issued quite a few allocations. Um due, again, just due to the nature of growth in South Burlington, and those allocations, of course, uh folks pay for those as well, so. That is what constitutes the increase there you see on the revenue side for wastewater, uh on the expenditure side. Uh we've got, well, we recently got cost back, so we are part of a consortium around Chittenden County that buys chemicals. Uh for wastewater plants, some significant increases there, so the group bulk buying gets us kind of a, a better rate. Uh but even so, uh we've seen some big increases in the caustic soda and lime line item, which is used to adjust pH through the treatment process. Uh also alum, a significant increase in alum that is used at Airport Parkway. Uh that is important, it really kind of binds up the phosphorus, it's injected into the waste stream, helps bind up the phosphorus and removes. Um it in the treatment process, so that it's not discharged to the lake, um and so I'm just gonna put a note there on the spotlight slide. How we've done for phosphorus removal in a few minutes, but those are some of the big increases on the, on the wastewater side, fiscal proposed for fiscal year twenty-four. Uh what is in the wastewater C I P, uh again, the Bartlett Bay wastewater treatment facility upgrade, uh so that includes the pant, plant upgrade. Uh for pump stations nearby the plant and solids management and handling, uh we talked about that back in October, we're gonna talk about it again after this. For the, the bond necessity hearing, so I don't wanna spend too much time on it right now, uh we have a Twin Oaks pump station upgrade. Uh then there's some debt payment um line items in the C I P uh for previous upgrade to Airport Parkway and Hadley Road pump station. And then again, that uh fleet purchase, splitting that vacuum truck with the stormwater division. And then uh so due to all that, uh this is sort of those chemical cost increases and planning ahead for costs of the plant upgrade. Uh we're proposing an eight point three percent increase in uh in the wastewater rate for F Y twenty-four. So again, the blue line, uh if you'd like to talk in straight dollars, cost for a thousand gallons, that is the left axis, if you prefer percentages. That is the yellow line in the right axis, uh and so I, I'm gonna focus on the yellow line for a moment, um you could see that large spike. Where it was, it was over twenty-five percent increase, that was associated right with when we did the, the Airport Parkway plant upgrade. So there was a major increase there to help pay for that, since then, uh our increases have been quite low. Um and so this is sort of our, our largest increase in a while at eight percent, it's been below five is what the proposals and approvals have been. Uh but this proposed increase would uh make the rate forty-eight dollars and twenty cents per a thousand cubic feet. And uh roughly result in a thirty-dollar annual increase for a typical homeowner. Um and um councillor Real mentioned this earlier, so I included this slide in here, our rates, uh this is F Y twenty-two data. This is uh the last time we collected it, uh our wastewater superintendent called around and got data and then converted it to a normalized format here. Uh but you can see us all the way on the right, so currently we are uh the lowest uh for a single-family homeowner, our rates are, are lowest in the area and state. As far as we know, um and I, you know, I don't know what folks in the other communities are doing this year, but I imagine they're also gonna have. Fairly significant increases as well in their proposals for F Y twenty-four budgets. Uh and then our emerging issues, so chemical costs went up, we're hoping they don't continue to go up at the fifty percent rate we saw. Uh we actually use uh two different chemicals at each plant. Uh, we actually use uh two different chemicals at each plant, alum at Airport Parkway, pack at Bartlett Bay. The pack did not go up. We're wondering if that's going to happen in the near future. Um, and there's not a lot we can do about that, those increases. Uh, though we could discuss using less of those chemicals, though it would result in uh more phosphorus discharge to the lake. So we can talk more about that in a second when I get through the rest of the slide here. Uh, always keeping an eye on bio solids regulation. Uh, so our Airport Parkway plant takes all the solids from Bartlett Bay and Airport Parkway. We produce a um. Exceptional quality or E Q class A bio solid. Uh, but we have seen proposals in the legislature over recent years. Uh, that would kind of restrict what these materials can be used for. Uh, and that's due to concerns over PFOS and microplastics and the like, so that's something we're always keeping an eye on. Um, we talked about the bond vote for the wastewater plant. Uh, I wanted to mention again, we've got a rate study we're currently working on. So in the near future, uh, I'll be back here uh with a consultant to talk about our rates. And sort of some planning uh related to what we were talking about going forward. Uh, and then um pump station upgrades. We're always gonna be doing pump station upgrades, I think. Uh, every year from Public Works and Wastewater, you'll be hearing us here talking about pump stations, cause we have thirty two of them. Uh, with a design life of about twenty, twenty-five years. There's at least one up every year.
Congratulations to Bob Fisher and Will She- Shepherd.
So I snuck, even though those aren't emerging issues, I didn't wanna have two spotlight slides. So I snuck their awards on this slide. So that I also had space to show you this.
So the emerging issue is is where you're getting more awards.
That's right. It's a real issue. Bob's running out of wall space.
We like those kinds of issues, yeah.
Uh, so to go back to that conversation, I was putting a pin in. So this um chart shows the phosphorus coming into our two wastewater plants in blue and pounds. And then the orange uh line is sort of the phosphorus that leaves the plant. So you can see the major reduction there. Uh, by permit, we are allowed to discharge about twenty seven hundred pounds a year. We're currently discharging three hundred-ish, three fifty, whatever. Average there is. Um, and a lot of that is by using some of those chemicals I mentioned earlier, the alum and the pack. Um, so if we were concerned about costs, we could have a discussion about dialing back that line item and not using as much of that. That would in turn increase the amount of phosphorus we're sending to the lake. We would still put us within our permit thresholds. Uh, we've always operated on doing the absolute best job we can, removing as much phosphorus as we can to benefit Lake Champlain. Uh, but it is a conversation we could have if that was council's desire.
What are we allowed to discharge? I missed the twenty.
Annually, two thousand seven hundred eighty-six.
Wow. Yeah, uh, Tom.
I fully support what we're doing, but I've been curious with the cost, how much do you think if we wanted to go to the maximum amount, would we possibly save the city? Not that I wanna do that, but I'm just kinda curious what uh you think we're spending in excess to uh further clean up the lake.
That's tricky, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's not linear. You would need to put a significant amount of chemical in. If you didn't, you would have to go in and out before pre-treatment before uh two thousand, you were putting out. You could probably just cost like ten percent maybe or so.
Ten percent of what? Like, what are we talking in total?
So maybe thirty, forty thousand dollars.
Oh, it's not worth it.
The alum line item proposed uh for twenty four is two hundred eighty thousand dollars. And that's up significantly, a hundred thousand from F Y twenty-three, which is a hundred eighty. And that is due to the, just the cost of the chemical. Um, and so again, it's like it's a conversation we could have. It's something we'd have to think about and come back to you on with the actual savings there, but just.
I don't wanna have that conversation for one.
I just wanna know how magnanimous we are.
Uh, it gives back to us. We drink it.
Are the pounds of phosphorus entering the the plants, is that just proportional to the amount of of wastewater that you receive?
Generally speaking, yeah. And you know, up years and down years. Um. So anything on wastewater before I move to drinking water? And then I think that's the last division you have to hear from me before I turn it over to Erica. Hopefully I haven't chewed up all your time, Erica.
I would much prefer we spend time educating people not to put phosphorus on their lawns. That's what I, you know, that would be little money compared to.
Um, so moving on to drinking water. Um, so uh just recent successes again. Uh, radio read units. We've continued our program to install these across the city. Uh, having these units reduces the time required to manually read the meters, kind of avoids mistakes from misreading and things of that nature. Uh, required maintenance. Um, it's not the most exciting thing to talk about, but it's very important. We have some aging infrastructure. Not not only in uh wastewater, but certainly in water as well. Uh, so they operated and kind of maintained over fifteen hundred main line valves. Flushed every fire hydrant in the city. Uh, I should have wrote down how many we have. I don't recall, but uh it's quite a few. Takes quite a bit of time. Um, and then we've started uh some engineering on some really uh exciting capital projects. Uh, one is the addition of water storage in the high service area. Uh, another is an interconnection with the. Uh, Champlain Water District um transmission main behind the U Mall. It's sort of in the interstate right away back there. Uh, so we have a connection there, but we're gonna improve that. Um, and that'll help serve uh city center and sort of help us be able to route. Different ways, ways water can get to city center in different ways if something were to happen. So kind of looping our system. And then uh pipe extension in that same area to achieve the same goal. Um, getting into the revenue side. Uh, so our revenue increase here is assuming just a one percent increase in the volume of water sold. Uh, we're gonna talk about it again in the capital projects. We are required by. Regulation to do a lead service line survey. Uh, it's gonna be an expensive project. We don't anticipate finding a lot of lead service finds in South Burlington. Um, but it's it's something we have to do. Um, and so that's in our C I P. Uh, but we do anticipate receiving a grant to help offset some of those costs, so you'll see that in the revenue. And then similar to wastewater, we have a transfer in from reserve uh to help pay for some engineering work associated with those capital projects. But I just mentioned, we did some preliminary engineering on.
How do you figure out ver- um whether a s- a service line is led without digging it up?
So you review records, and if you don't have records, you may have to dig it up.
Hence the cost.
Whoa, okay.
So we're we're pursuing different ways and, you know, different consultants and and ways to manage that.
At least for a younger city than some places.
Are these records all paper or some of them are electronic, digitalized?
Jay, how much of this have we digitized our service line?
We're still working on it. Um, our records, our system is dated nineteen thirties.
Okay, so.
Oldest section, Williston Road, nineteen forty, Shelburne Road, nineteen thirties. Um, we don't expect, because we only had one superintendent from nineteen forty-five to nineteen seventy-eight. And he always said, we didn't have any lead. It was al- always copper. Unfortunately, that doesn't help us with the state, uh with the federal requirements. So we have to go off and prove it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, on the expenditure side, um, so we, when I built this budget and and turned it into Martha and Jesse. We were assuming a significant rate increase uh from the Champlain Water District, so we purchased water from the Champlain Water District. And then distributed and sell it to our South Burlington customers. Um, this budget was built assuming just over an eight percent rate increase from them. Uh, actually, last week, we got information it was actually supposed to be nine and a half percent. Um, so that's what's currently in the budget, though. And then uh proposed an increase in, associated with the capital projects I mentioned. So again, the capital projects on the water side, um, water storage capacity, that area highlighted in blue on the right, that is the high service area. So it's the majority of the city uh is served in the high service area. Uh, and that is uh the tank on Dorset, uh the water tower on Dorset Street tank. Uh, I mentioned interconnection. Uh, we are continuing with the water meter replacement program. You'll see a line item in the C I P for that. Lead service line survey we just talked about. And then some debt payment for previous investments in the city's water system. You'll also see those recurring debt payments, which are ending soon. Uh, and then, um, so I I switched the colors on this chart on you. I don't know why I did it from the other two. I guess to make sure you're still still paying attention. Um, but yeah, the gray line in this case, that is if you like to look at the dollars. Uh, and then the blue line in this chart is percent increase. Um, and so the scale on this one is different. It only goes up to twelve percent. Uh, different from the wastewater chart. Uh, but we are proposing an eight and a half percent rate increase here. Uh, to deal with some of our planned capital projects, uh replacement of aging infrastructure. And um, and the like, that that'll result in a thirty six dollar twenty-one cent per thousand cubic foot rate. And that would be about a twenty-three dollar annual increase for a typical homeowner uh at the eight and a half percent proposed increase. Um, similar chart to what I showed you for wastewater, but this is uh rates for drinking water. Again, South Burlington is the lowest uh that we found when we called around for F Y twenty-two rates. Similarly, we expect others are gonna have significant rate increases, especially now that we know, you know, folks that are served water through the the Champlain Water District. And that nine and a half percent increase. Uh, that'll likely get passed through to customers in all municipalities that are served by that. Um, and then. Think I talked about it already, lead, so emerging issues, it's just our aging infrastructure, the lead service line. Uh, and then we'll be back, or I'll be back. Uh, Jay will be with me and probably a consultant or two to talk about some of these capital projects. Uh, we are tentatively planning a bond vote. Uh, on those for town meeting day two thousand twenty-four. So that's sort of on the horizon here. But I hope to be back soon to talk to you more about the capital projects.
What is that hole in that pipe? It's a, that's a water pipe, right?
Yeah, Jay, what caused that one? Do you recall?
That is uh external corrosion, hot soils. And you'll notice that there are actually two.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, in the right, yeah.
Was there another pipe touching this pipe? Some other type of pipe? No?
So water was just leaking out of this thing?
So you said hot soil. What did that, what does that mean? Okay, whatever it was, oh. Ouch.
Yeah.
Uh, and just the spotlight item here for uh the wa- uh the water division. Uh, so water division employers are using technology to improve their operations. They have these valve actu- actuators. Uh, as part of their asset management program. So uh kind of i- it turns the valve on its own, so reduces the physical. Kind of employees constantly turning valves, reducing back and shoulder injuries. Uh, makes it a little easier for them. Uh, and it turns the the valves at a preset kind of torque to give an accurate count of rotation. Which is something they need to know if they have to go out there and turn a valve. They like to know how many times they have to turn it, uh, when to open or close it.
Is it memorized where it is? Has a GPS in it, so it knows when you're there that it's gonna be thirty turns?
Unfortunately, no. But we do have that in our asset management program. We're building that out more and more. Next, next model. Uh, and so before I turn it over to Erica, I guess I'll pause there for any questions on uh the water budget.
Are you thinking about putting the new storage eh next to the current storage on Dorset Street?
Yes.
Because of the height?
I don't wanna get too much into it, because I wanna come back and talk in much more detail about this. Um, but that is the location we have in mind.
But there is space there.
We do have uh the physical ground space, yes.
The twin towers.
All right, uh, I'll give Tom a break uh for a short while before he gives another presentation. Uh, but I'm gonna start with Penny for Paths, um, looking at that special fund. Going through the same format, starting with some successes. Um, in F Y twenty-two. Uh, successful coordination with V Trans on Heinsberg Road to get three new crosswalks put in at um. Proudly Ruth, is that the other one? And the trail. Um, thirty R R F Bs were upgraded so that they're fully in compliance. Uh, a lot of them, it was, the signs were only facing one direction. They're supposed to be back to back. Uh, so that is a real improvement for safety and visibility there. And the crosswalk on Kennedy Drive at West Twin Oaks Terrace was also completed in F Y twenty-two. F Y twenty-three, um, a big thing here is that we've kicked off the Transportation and Land Use Climate Action Implementation Plan. Uh, which we will be talking a lot about in the next year. Um, but that is a very exciting thing and uh. I think there will be a lot of coordination between uh Penny for Paths' future projects uh with this component. Um, and the Bike Pad Committee is also very excited about this moving forward. They have a representative there. Uh, we are working actively towards a walk bike master plan, thinking about applying. Uh, to this U C R P C for their annual work program in F Y twenty-four. But you'll hear from Havela and myself and the Bike Pad Committee. Uh, that they, uh, the committee is fully in support of moving forward in this and it. Makes sense with timing of the comprehensive plan getting underway. And so, um, having that backing from the committee. And potential funding to help with that is a a big win. And um.
Does the re- revenue uh um for Penny for Paths end in F Y uh twenty-five? I can't remember. It was ten years, right? But I I can't remember when we did it.
Um, I believe it, I I mean, it's F Y twenty-eight. I have it on a future slide.
Oh, okay. We'll get to it, okay.
Yeah. Um, and yet the Bike Pad Committee, they have been hosting some uh public meetings. Tim came for uh the start of one this past week, uh, on a lot of projects that Penny for Paths supports. So just good collaboration happening there. And we are beginning a condition inventory of all of our shared use paths. Much of the same that we do for our roads and that pavement, creating that same uh data set for our shared use paths. I'm gonna show the um expenditures and revenues slightly differently than the previous ones, because. The way these balances carry forward, when I was looking at them to lay it out in the kind of template, I. I look at the funds and I couldn't wrap my head around it clearly in two separate tables. So I'm gonna have it shown here, so you can see how the. Uh, balance changes over time. Looking back, um. F Y twenty-one is just kind of where I'm showing, so that we can see actual spending. Four hundred thousand dollars roughly in the balance there. A lot of expenditures in F Y twenty-two, a lot of uh big things happened there and a lot of projects under design in F Y twenty-two that are continuing. And um twenty-three, that is what has been spent so far. Um. And plus a little bit projected for our C I Ps. And then twenty-four and twenty-five are both um based on the. C I P plans. There should be a negative in front of that two fifty on F Y twenty-five. Um. But then you can see in the note here, the F Y twenty-four revenue is based on the assumed grand list growth, um, talking with Martha about that. And then F Y twenty-five is just a one percent grand list growth from F Y twenty-four. Uh, so that's how the projections are done there. You can see based on what we're uh proposing to spend, we have plenty of money in the fund to continue that effort. And a lot of that is, um, there's a lot of money floating around for these types of projects. And the fact that we have Penny for Paths is a really good leverage point in those applications, cause we can provide match. So going into the F Y twenty-four C I P projects here, first, um, I wanted to just. Let you know about one update from the last round of C I P that you saw. Um, there was one change. It's in a future year, so it's not impacting F Y twenty-four. There was a change in the scope of the Queen City Park Road Shared Use Path. I've been talking with the city of Burlington on their uh component of it and their timeline. And it made sense for us to include our full section and not just a small section that had been shown. Um, so in F Y twenty-seven and F Y twenty-eight, it used to total to a hundred and fifty uh thousand dollars. And now it's spread out between F Y twenty-six and F Y twenty-eight, starting a little bit sooner. And it is. What is that up to? Eighty K in F Y twenty-six, five hundred and ten in F Y twenty-seven, and three hundred and fifty-five in F Y twenty-eight. Um, but of that, it is showing that we are proposing. I should have done this math before.
Is this another slide that you?
No, this is something that um will show up. Is, did that make it in the packet? Or is it ju- just in the new budget book?
There was information in the packet, but.
Yeah, I think it is just the C I P that was uh uploaded to the city's website, has been updated to reflect. The changes that Erica is talking about.
So I just wanted to make sure I remember to get it out there. Um, so that has increased. But uh eighty percent of that is proposed to be grant funded in there. Um. So that is in a future year. Um, but so looking back at F Y twenty-four. The projects being shown here are um the final design and construction of the Dorset Street Shared Use Path. We are moving through uh the earlier phases of designing right away on that project. Um, similar for Spear Street. Um similar for Spear Street Shared Use Path, that is just kind of like one design phase behind Dorset Street. So we're moving through design and that um will go through those next phases. The Mary Street sidewalk is now being shown in Bike Ped rather than city center, it's highway impact fee funded rather than. Uh TIF funded, so it just made sense to put it here. The Swift Street Shared Use Path connection, uh we have the start of design going in here for um. The little bit of connection that will need to happen when Spear Meadows is constructed. Uh but we imagine it might take a little bit of time because of wetlands, so we wanted to start on that. And um three of the four crosswalks that we are currently in scoping studies for that are. Likely to be recommended to put one in at those locations. Putting in fifteen thousand dollars for design of those three. And then construction is in the following year.
The mi- the Mary Street um sidewalk, we would try to get that constructed before we reopened Mary Street, is that? Has anybody talked about that yet? That's not a topic for tonight, I just wanted to say that. We can.
I think that that would be the goal.
Yeah.
Um I think a lot is not down here yet either, but I think we would also uh want to connect that up with the. You know, connectivity of Garden Street.
Right, right, Garden Street first, sidewalk, and then maybe talk about it, okay, thanks.
Question on the slide?
Yes.
So I don't see Lime Kiln Road and I don't have the CIP in front of me, is that still on the far out radar for a couple of years out? And do you think the Penny for Paths is still gonna have enough resources to address any of that very expensive uh improvement?
Uh yeah, absolutely, so the phase one, the one that has been designed ended up coming up a lot more expensive. Is currently listed as FY twenty six and FY twenty seven, spreading that out just to give us some more time to chase funding. More than anything for that, because it is a pretty hefty uh price tag there.
Okay, thanks.
Um so this is just a snippet of the Dorset Street path. Um which is a very exciting project, making that connection between Old Cross and Sadie Lane. So Penny for Paths, uh we don't need more money from you, we just need you to help. Continue growing the grand list is really uh what is needed here. Uh but I just wanted to know, as Tom mentioned, Penny for Paths doesn't pay for maintenance be uh according to its current pilot language. Uh so that Bike Ped Maintenance Line going up to forty thousand, uh if we want to keep. Uh installing these types of facilities and we have the money to do that through Penny for Paths, uh there is. There are costs that come with it, that we need to be thinking about.
So you're recommending forty thousand dollars for next year's budget?
That, that's the line item in the highway budget, so flowing from thirty to forty.
So some emerging issues here, oh, we actually have until FY.
Thirty two.
Thirty two. So just thinking about that as we look at.
That could be, that has to be wrong. I think we only gave it ten years.
That might be the projection of when we would run out, what.
Oh, spend it all.
Yeah, um that was when the number hit zero on our uh projections. So I think it does end in FY twenty eight, um and with current list of spending, goes to FY thirty two. Um so just thinking about that as we look for funding and my job is to think um mainly in ten year chunks. So thinking about that moving forward. Uh material costs, as Tom talked about, rapidly rising. So um the maintenance line item doesn't go quite as far, but also paths are just more expensive. Um especially if you wanna build them well, um and have a good enough sub base so that we don't have to replace them as often. And the last thing here is just thinking about data, uh we have a lot of data on other sections of our infrastructure. But as shared use paths and sidewalks and crosswalks become a larger and larger portion of our infrastructure. It's important that we know where they are, know their condition, know how they connect or don't connect. So that's something that uh I have been thinking a lot about. With the data that we do have, um a quick analysis showed that eighty six point four percent of residential buildings. In the city are within a tenth of a mile of a shared use path. Disclaimer, that doesn't mean that it's a tenth of a mile from a connected, a fully connected section. That is gonna be more than a thirty minute GIS exercise to get there. Um and this isn't units, so it's actually quite hu- it's a higher than that. If we're talking in units, this is just a residential building. And uh we already have over twenty miles of shared use path, but we have. Uh three point two mo- more miles that are currently under design or are planned for design within the next five years. Uh those four shown uh right there. There any other questions on Penny for Paths before I move to open space?
Nope, let's carry on.
So open space. Uh some of the goings on here, you will be able to see soon. Uh the Wayfinding Project in Wheeler Park was completed, uh that was an effort with uh recreation and parks as well as. Um open space folks there. And an accessible path to the Wheeler Treehouse is also complete, so now there is a nice sure pack path so that. Um all folks can get to that treehouse. In FY twenty three, we have gotten back in full swing. Uh for the path parking lot and viewing area at Hubbard, which is a a. Larger effort than uh just a path that a parking lot viewing area may initially seem. And the Red Rocks Management Plan was also updated, so that helps us. Get a clearer picture of what it takes to maintain something like Red Rocks moving forward. And that ties directly into the trail improvements that have been ongoing. Uh they are still in permitting, taking a little while. Um but that permitting should be complete and ready for construction within the fiscal year. The fund, uh the funding here in open space looks a little bit. Um there's a bit more going on here than Penny for Paths. And this is uh just making sure we know, this is only the half cent that goes towards open space directly, this is not the half cent that. Uh deals with land acquisition. So the open space revenue is very similar to Penny for Path, if you cut it in half, um because it's a half cent here. So those projections are done the exact same way, um the expenditures were also laid out similarly. FY twenty three and twenty four are a bit higher because there was quite a pandemic slowdown in a lot of this work. Um and again, costs are going up, so when we made this next round of CIP. There was uh some growth in costs due to inflation there. And the open space note repayment is ongoing at about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year. Wrong computer.
Is that uh repayment, which is that, is it for Hubbard?
That is from the one point five million that was initially taken out to start the open space fund.
I didn't really understand what you said.
We took out a loan, for a ten million dollar loan for the, for the renovation of the parks. So they're just paying back the lo- that's.
Yeah.
They're paying back the.
That is a mortgage? Which park?
For the whole.
It was for the whole open space uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Project, yes, it was for um, there was no dedicated uh open space for that. It has been, the love has been shared from that. Looking at the CIP in FY twenty four, how that three hundred and ninety thousand breaks out. A lot of it is going to Hubbard to finish the design and go into the construction. For um all of that new infrastructure there. Uh totaling to two hundred and forty and it is broken up, like you can see, a hundred thousand dollars in grant revenue. And the rest is split fifty fifty between rec impact fees and Penny for Paths. Um the Penny for Paths, of course, is because of the recreation path, um and the rec impact fees can be used for the other parts. Uh Red Rocks, um that's the stuff that's in permitting right now for the parking area, some trail improvements and a lot of erosion repairs. Uh to finish that design and construction, um and that is all from that open space debt. Um and Wheeler, there are a few more items left in the management plan and the. Open space priority list, uh that was put together a couple of years ago. There's about eighty thousand dollars of work associated there projected. Um and again, that's funded through the open space fund.
I look forward to when Hubbard has a path that's parallel to Swift Street that is not swampy. After a couple days of rain. And people get creative and going around and around and deeper into the grass to try to avoid the water and the mud.
Well, if things go well, we can get you there by the end of FY twenty four.
It's a natural open space, so I get that.
Yeah, it is a recreation and natural area, so finding a balance there. Resources requested, same thing as Penny for Paths, just keep helping us grow the grand list, uh so that this fund can continue to grow. Um and a note here, the um note repayment will be done in FY twenty seven. Paying off that debt, that a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year stops in FY twenty seven, so the revenues will uh increase quite greatly there. Emerging issues, permitting is always a concern when dealing with natural areas here. The State Wetland Department um is a a department that we work with very frequently. In any of these natural areas, as you mentioned him, they're very wet in a lot of these places. Um so that coordination needs to be happening from the very beginning and these sites are. Large and involved, so they can end up in Act two fifty at times. And these projects, uh they're not necessarily as straightforward as certain things, like looking exclusively at a road, exclusively at a shared use path. There's a lot of things going on, um so at times it leads to a very large team, there's a lot of technical coordination. Between all of those different components. So it's just something we think about when uh soliciting consultants for projects and as we move through all of those different phases. And another little uh data analysis here. Uh sixty eight percent of residential buildings are within a quarter mile of an open space area. Or a park uh across the city. Um and we are getting closer to a new project manager who will be starting in FY twenty three if all things go well. And they will help to take on open space projects, um so that there can be a bit more uh of a dedicated effort from one. Person to be uh more focused on those ones. Directly to really see them through completion and manage all of that technical coordination. And like we mentioned, the permitting for trial and drainage work in Red Rocks, it's been going on for a while. But it is apparently moving forward from what's been reported back.
Is your first data point, is that as the crow flies?
Uh so the way it's done is. I'm thinking about the like GIS steps, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Again, I can, I could get you a number of by the road. In a, in a day's worth of GIS or at least half a day.
Great.
And so that's our last slide there.
Questions? Well, thank you, there was a lot of information, but you have forty percent of the city budget, so. Do it in an hour, it's not bad. Or an hour and fifteen minutes, whatever.
Alright.
Thank you.
I apologize to the next guy for taking his time.
And I will see you in a few agenda items.
Alright.
Thank you both.
Alright, so item eight is um considering the council to consider a necessity. Resolution and declaration of intent on the need to bond for improvements to the Bartlett Bay Water Treatment Facility. And consider placing the question on the town meeting day twenty twenty three ballot.
Alright, uh good evening again, uh for those just tuning in, uh Tom DePietro, Director of Public Works. Uh and presenting with me is Colin McNeil, uh the city's attorney. Uh so what we're gonna talk about is um basically a necessity hearing for the bond vote. For improvements uh to our wastewater infrastructure. Uh so in order to have a bond vote, uh related to the treatment plant upgrade, uh council must pass a resolution that indicates the following. Uh that there is public interest or necessity demands the improvements. Uh that the cost of the improvements will be too great to be paid out of the ordinary annual income and revenue. Um and order the submission of of the proposition to incur bonded debt to pay for the public improvement, uh the voters on town meeting day. Uh it's a statutory requirement under uh Vermont. And so what I'm gonna do is do a quick as I possibly can overview of the project. Uh you will remember that we were here on October third, uh with the project engineer Jenny Oster. Who did a great job in a lot of detail on this project, I don't wanna recreate that here, so I'm gonna move quick. I'll catch you up on your, your schedule. Uh but please, if there's something you really wanna know, feel free to interrupt me, we just wanted to give uh a flavor of this project to those that maybe didn't see that. So uh here we go. Uh Bartlett Bay Facility, uh it was originally constructed in the nineteen seventies, uh it was upgraded in nineteen ninety nine. Uh here is a general overview, it's a one point two five million gallon per day plant, that's the design capacity. Keeping in mind here, so the expected useful life of a wastewater treatment facility is fifty years with upgrades planned every twenty to thirty years. Um the mechanical, electrical and process equipment needs uh replacement. Refurbishment every twenty to twenty five years, uh Bartlett Bay, that equipment is about twenty three years old, so we're, we're right in that range. Uh we've anticipated this for a while, uh and these upgrades give us an opportunity to incorporate advances in technology, so to improve our treatment. Our efficiency, uh energy efficiency, things of that nature. What has been going on at the plant, so you can see, uh here's just a couple examples of kind of the status of things down at Bartlett Bay. Um kind of wear and tear on the equipment, the clarifier, uh leaking ceiling in the pump station in picture two. Uh the blowers were installed in nineteen eighty seven, uh need a replacement. And then um there's a storage tank there and you see a little weep hole above the ladder, uh so just things have aged, need replacement. Uh some critical items that do need to be addressed though is grit removal. So uh the screening is now obsolete and it's ineffective, it's allowing things to move into the plant. Which again can foul processes and pumps and things downstream. Uh the UV disinfection system, uh it's sort of the end of the process, that is no longer supported by the manufacturer. So if we were to have a failure there, uh it would be very difficult and expensive to to kind of replace that system, so that's a critical need. And that tank, uh we can't even fill the tank all the way up at the moment because of those weep holes, so it's only filled to the lowest hole at the moment. Uh existing site plan, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here, but you can see the different buildings, uh this is current conditions. And then uh as we go through uh our preliminary engineering, kind of lays things out a little bit differently, make use of uh existing space. And it shifts things around, this new operation maintenance building, uh new sludge handling tanks. Aeration blower, uh new headworks building. And so uh that is the first component of this, I guess I should have mentioned, uh the vote here is for uh three different components. It's the plant upgrade and then it's solids handling, so in the treatment process, all the material that settles out, those are the solids. At Bartlett Bay, those materials get trucked up to the Airport Parkway Plant. Um where they are turned into a class A bio solid. So very brief history, Airport Parkway Plant was constructed nineteen sixty seven, uh it saw a major upgrade in two thousand eleven. And um as part of that upgrade, we went to a two pad or a two phased anaerobic digestion process. Uh if you look at this from a hydraulic standpoint, we don't necessarily need to upgrade. But there is a way that this is balanced and regulated. Uh and you may remember from the third, we had a longer conversation about the volatile solids reduction. And the ratio of those to the waste activated sludge or WAS. So basically those volatile solids, those are what comes out of the primary clarifier, those are very active. The, the WAS is very inert, that's at the end of the process, so it's a proper blend of those goes into the digester. Um and that's where we're running into issues. Uh I know um Mr. Fisher recently filed a report with the state to explain how we're gonna address this issue. And this is our, our plan is um what I'll show you here, it's the addition of a initial clarifier. Uh and um some additional storage, uh fixing some storage tanks at the Airport Parkway Plant. Uh this will also allow some additional operational flexibility for our operators. Uh we'll be able to take a clarifier down for cleaning or an emergency, uh right now we don't have that ability. Uh this clarifier was always in the plan, but it was eliminated. Uh a va- value engineered out during the last upgrade, and so we've come to a point where we need to to add it back in. Uh I think I said all this already, so I'm going to skip through here. And uh the last piece of this uh for the bond is refurbishment of four wastewater pump stations that are within the sewer shed of Bartlett Bay Plant. Uh so the city has thirty two pump stations, uh twenty three of those go to Airport Parkway, nine to Bartlett Bay. Again, most in the state, most pump stations and we're adding more. Again, most in the state, most pump stations, and we're adding more uh with new development we're seeing, we're expecting to gain a few over the next couple of years even. So the four that we're talking about here though, uh that are part of the proposed bond vote are three pump stations down in Queen City Park and one on Bartlett Bay Road and associated force main, so. Uh map uh is coming up on the screen, is difficult to see, but this is off of Central Avenue. Uh the red dots show the existing pump station locations. So there's one pump station here that collects wastewater kind of offline and have another Queen Station, Queen City Pump Station number two. This part of Central, that all goes to pump station number one, which then pumps all of that wastewater out of the Queen City Park neighborhood up towards Fayette Road where it eventually makes its way to the plant. Um and then the Bartlett Bay Pump Station, this is up near the plant, uh takes wastewater from the area of Bartlett Bay Road, uh Bingham Road, Twin Brook, and it brings that to the plant. Uh why do we need to do these? Uh these pump stations have been in service for over fifty years. Uh with upgrades, little upgrades here and there, typical lifespan of pump stations, twenty five years. We've seen some, uh well, obviously other costs of repairing everything have increased over time. Um and all four pump stations are located very close to Lake Champlain. So some of our older pump stations, um it's just certainly a concern as these things age, we certainly don't wanna have a a issue with the pump station that causes wastewater to spill out and and leak into Shelburne Bay. Uh which is, as you know, where our our drinking water comes from, where the Champlain Water District uh has their intake pipe. Think I've said everything here already, just iterate, so we're also starting to see some failures. So we've had a force main crack or break on uh Queen City Park number two, uh nothing reached surface waters thankfully. Um and then Queen City One, we had a failure, again, I I think it reached nearby areas. And then also all, in addition to obviously not wanting this water to reach, there's wastewater to reach Lake Champlain, that would be a permit violation. For all those reasons, we we are proposing to improve these four pump stations, getting quickly into costs here. Uh so costs always come with caveats, especially these days. Um so the buy American, uh build American, buy America requirements are included here. Um we're using our most recent bid information, our consultant pulled this all information together. Uh it's Doyle Tanner and Associates in this case, and then they've included a contingency. They've escalated those costs, assuming uh we would bid this in fiscal year twenty four, so they've escalated them for inflation, uh as best we can predict that. And then any engineering costs you see are just a a formula based on the anticipated cost of improvements. So what that brings the entire cost of this project to is about twenty two point one million for the plant upgrade. Uh solids handling, about one point eight million, refurbishment of the pump stations, about four point four million. And then engineering associated with all that, uh by the formula around five million. And then a hundred thirty two thousand more for legal admin permitting to bring us to the total of uh thirty three point eight million is what we're looking at for these. So we recently talked about our rate increases in wastewater, they've been quite low since fiscal year thirteen, they've been about two point two percent. Uh not necessarily even kept up with inflation before inflation really took off here recently. Um we're currently working on a rate study, so I'll be back here uh late winter, early spring hopefully, to talk about the results of that rate study where we're looking really closely at our wastewater and drinking water rates and kind of where we go from here. But just looking at this project alone, it's about a six and three quarter percent rate increase uh for the four years running uh to help to to fund this project. And then that would in, that would result in about a seventy one dollar annual increase to your average homeowner versus that kind of steady two point two percent rate increase. Now, none of that factors in any grants we may get in the interim period here, which we're actively working on. Uh and again, I'll throw I'll throw this up again, uh just a comparison of rates in the region, fiscal year twenty two is the last time we collected this data. South Burlington, all the way on the right there, we have some of the lowest, we have the lowest rates in the region and possibly the state. Project schedule, uh so we are at that first dot uh and preparing bond documents. Uh we're gonna do some public informational meetings coming up, uh proposing the bond vote. Um if the legal paperwork we're gonna go over with you this evening is approved, that'll be on town meeting day in two thousand twenty three. That'll allow us to move into final design, uh bidding in twenty four and starting construction. Uh in a kind of two-year period there from twenty four to twenty six. And a year later will be our first payment on the bond in two thousand twenty seven. Um so why are we doing this now? Uh well, we've anticipated the need and we've planned for this upgrade for quite a while. Uh we're seeing what's expected, sort of your normal deterioration over time. And operational issues associated with those pump stations and the plant as well. Uh and then bond authorization of this type uh really indicates community support and makes the city more competitive as we go and we keep an eye out for grants to help pay for this and reduce that overall cost. An important note, a bond authorization for thirty three point eight uh for the thirty three point eight million does not mean we have to spend that amount. Uh we're not obligated to, we can, we can spend less again if we're able to secure grants and things of that nature.
So this is very helpful and I definitely support this, I'm ready to make the motion, but on the why now slide, can you also with a straight face, Tom, say that this also will help increase the quality of the water near Red Rocks Park, thus increasing the likelihood that people will uh feel feel comfortable swimming in that space during the summer months?
So I think issues in Red Rocks are more related uh to stormwater runoff. What's that?
Not the proximity of these pump stations?
Nope, the pump stations aren't leaking or anything of that nature, you know wastewater's not reaching the lake or surface waters. Uh this is preemptive to prevent that from happening, because again, these are quite old, almost fifty years old, these pump stations.
Thank you.
Okay, Megan.
Yeah, I think we talked about this before, but I received an email between that conversation and tonight asking if the federal government has any ARPA funds that they would dedicate to wastewater treatment plants.
Um so keeping a very close eye out uh for any funding opportunities. So we've looked at ARPA funds, we're on all of the state lists, uh we are currently evaluating. There was a recent announcement that forty million dollars was made available, available uh for projects that support. Oh, I'm trying to remember the name of that one, Jesse, um community development. There was another forty million dollars became available ARPA funding, which we're going to try to pursue here, we've been talking with some of our consultants about um that. Uh the money was set aside for disadvantaged communities and um and so they've got thirty days before uh other communities. So it opens up to a community like South Burlington on December twenty ninth, so we're hoping to be kind of in the queue and get an application ready there.
Is that state forty million for the state or for the country?
Statewide.
Okay.
Just add another sentence about that, and we talked with our incoming delegation about this this morning. Um the way the state has currently allocated those ARPA funds very appropriately are to target disadvantaged communities to build new. Um and when the timeline gets close, so we need to get the, and the state needs to get those those money up, those dollars out the door, then we are hopeful it will go to existing um existing communities or non-disadvantaged communities. So that's the lists that Tom's referring to, that those are, we're getting in line for those things if those spigots open.
And we'll be more shovel-ready than some other communities potentially, that's our advantage, I guess.
That's right, and and so again, I'll I'll mention to folks maybe listening online or in the audience, uh there's a thorough discussion of this project from October third, so if you're interested, please tune in, I actually hyperlinked it on the first slide to make it easy for anybody that wanted to go and hear an in-depth discussion of the projects. Um I think I'll I'll turn it over to you at this point, Colin, to talk about what's in the packet.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Is is there a local match for that federal grant?
The one, yes, there is. Um and I don't have all the details with me today, uh it's just something that we're we're following up on, because every opportunity now we're sending emails out to make sure we're chasing down.
But a future date after December twenty ninth.
Yes, Colin?
Yes, thank you. So we're uh recommending that you make two motions tonight. Uh the fir- all all, both of those motions pertain to documents that are in your packet. Um the first motion would be to adopt a resolution of necessity for capital improvement project. Uh this resolution incorporates the requirements that are laid out in twenty four VSA seventeen fifty five. That essentially says that the public interest or necessity demands the improvements that Tom has been talking about. That the cost of the same will be too great to be paid out of the ordinary and annual income and revenue. Um and orders the submission of the proposition of incurring bonded debt to pay for the public improvements to the qualified voters of such municipal corporation at a meeting, meeting to be held for that purpose. So what you'll see in the resolution of necessity for capital improvement project is uh lays out those three requirements. And it also incorporates the the draft ballot language that you have in your packet as well. Um that that language is included in the necessity resolution, so with with approving the necessity resolution, you'll be approving that ballot language. The second motion uh is to adopt a declaration of official intent um to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of indebtedness. This essentially is for the purpose of complying with treasury regulations.
Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to do both those things.
So it's up there on the screen, I would make the first motion, and then if that's passed, I would make the second motion.
First motion?
I'll move to adopt the resolution of necessity for capital improvement project.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so the motion carries. Second motion?
I'll move to adopt the declaration of official intent of City of South Burlington to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of indebtedness.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I do wanna just call out that I I should have done this in the beginning, this is Tom's first official budget presentation to you all as Public Works Director, you've heard from him for sixteen years in other capacities, fourteen years? Like twelve years, I don't know, long time.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
I didn't always come to these meetings, so.
Uh but first is the official officially as the Public Works Director, so Tom, thrilled to have you in this role.
Thank you.
Only Bob gets the awards.
That's right, geez. Next time, you can put a little plaque in under the.
And thank, thank you all for listening.
Okay, thank you, it was it was a very um good presentation, I thought. Yep, so thank you. Um so moving on then to um item nine. Um receiving the community development presentation including the energy fund. Alana Blanchard. And first, let's congratulate you on a wonderful illuminate. It was illuminating to a lot of people.
And it it took a lot of people to get it off the ground and um make it work. And I'm really grateful to all of you that volunteered and all of you that attended. And especially to the uh Recreation and Parks Department that put it on, so.
Yeah.
Really fun.
Group effort, so I thank you, the first of many.
Sorry, my um I can't, oh, I can still look up here, on my screen, everything's covered. So let's see if I can get down to the. Okay, that may be what's happening, because it's not.
See, I wouldn't even be able to find those.
I think it's just not being responsive, but sometimes happens, so hang on, here we go. It's just being, oh, she's been trying. It's just a little slow, so here we go, all right, um so it's uh, okay, so um Alana Blanchard, Community Development Director, uh really pleased to be here tonight to present um the community development uh budget uh and um and a few parts of the uh CIP. Um we uh keyboard is just not responding. At all, all right, there we go. There, it was a little bit delayed also with Tom. Yeah, okay, good, all right, um I will adjust. Uh so, so um so I uh am responsible for many aspects of the Tiff District. Um and the projects that are related to the to Tiff District and that use tax increment financing in order to get them um uh built. Um I also staff uh two committees, Public Art Selection Committee and the Energy Committee. Um and am progressing very slowly uh towards the Economic Development Committee. I uh and that may happen in the next fiscal year. Uh or during this this fiscal year. And I also take on other projects, uh my my ti- my sort of description for my position is very broad, so I can take on other projects as assigned. Um and I try to uh stay in touch with different organizations within the city. Um especially where they relate to economic development and business districts and downtowns. Uh so in twenty uh FY twenty two and FY twenty three, I think you've seen a lot of this before. Um but there was a lot of recognition for one eighty Market Street for the building that we're in today. Uh and one of the fun things that happened is a lot of professional building-related organizations really wanted to come and bring their chapter here and take a tour um of the building. And so uh the project architect and the different engineers all participated in those and showed off the building and the especially the green features as well as the spaces, I think, you know, for many people, it was just a fun building to see and learn about. So um civil engineers, the Architects Association, and then the Heating and Cooling Engineers came by. Um we also received a merit award um in la- last year. Uh so uh and then you also um are aware, huge highlight uh for the year was um securing nine point seven million in RACE grant funds, um as well as the grant that really was able to spark illuminate Vermont and get it going. Um and uh enabling us to have a downtown festival. Uh and then um BEPSI approved a substantial change to the Tiff District. And um the East West Crossing Project was launched. Um and City's Center Park Phase Two was a project that we kind of had on the back burner until we acquired the land for the connection between City Center Park and Garden Street Market Street, and so we were able to get that one going as well. So we um for community development, there are many different revenue sources, especially because we're talking about fairly large projects. In terms of general fund, so uh funds coming from property taxes or sales taxes or other revenue sources in the general fund, we are only, we're, there's no change. So we're still at um eight hundred thousand, um we had been at eight hundred and sixty thousand in the past. Um and it was considered this year, it didn't seem the right year to bring it back up. So we're sort of level at eight hundred thousand. Um Fund two eighty is the fund that we use to track all of the city center Tiff District um projects and all of the expenses related to those projects. So we have a variety of revenues that we will be using, this is not necessarily what's coming in, it's just about what is being spent in the next fiscal year, anticipated to be spent on these projects. So we estimate to that we'll spend about one point two million on grants, three point nine million in debt proceeds. And um six hundred and thirty one thousand in Tiff increment and zero in impact fees. Um so the Tiff increment um is actually uh what we expect to to receive, it's not what we expect to spend. So it's a little different from the other two. Uh and then this revenue um summary doesn't reflect grants. So grants that we have not secured are not reflected in the FY twenty four.
Sure.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Uh so I wanna preface this by saying I'm not advocating for this to happen, uh but I would love to hear your reaction to, I recall it was five years ago uh where we lowered the eight hundred thousand, I wanna say to like seven or seven twenty or something. Because we were looking at a pretty tight budgetary year, and from everything I'm hearing so far, we're looking at one of the highest increases or proposed increases that I've seen while on council. If uh we need to start finding areas, um knowing that you've recently presented on some optimistic outlooks uh for the Tiff Center, if this were to drop to as low as six hundred thousand, again, not saying I want to do this. Um what is your reaction to this mon number possibly going down for this budgetary year?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I think that there's, there's two responses, I mean, two thoughts that I have. Um the first is that you are looking at some fairly large increases to the Tiff. The first is that you are looking at some fairly large increases to the TIF district debt service that are going to cover, cover the time period when the TIF proceeds are not at the same level as the payments. And so I would recommend being prepared for those payments. And then the other, the other comment is that even if the funds aren't there this year, those debt service payments will also always be there. So, so you'll still need to provide the funds at some point. And it will, would make it harder to get up to the eight sixty in future years. So, so, but it's certainly something, you know, we can always look at it.
Can I add one other reaction? I agree with everything Alana said. If that was something the council wanted to consider, another option would be, we are, we are running, as you've seen in the financials to date, we are running pretty well in FY twenty-three. So an option, if you were going to reduce it going into FY twenty-four, would be essentially to use surplus to offset that tax capacity in FY twenty-four. It changes how we have talked with the community about how we support the TIF district and support those other, those investments that the community has made. But you could direct us to look at the FY, a potential FY twenty-three surplus to do a one-time investment into the TIF district.
Okay. So I think. So in the general fund, as stated, in terms of expenditures, no changes. There's eight hundred thousand for the TIF district. Sorry, for the City Center Reserve, that's not actually in Fund two eighty, but it is set aside for the TIF district. Five thousand for public art, and that's citywide, so outside of city center. And then the image that you see on the screen, that's a piece that's being considered right now by the Public Art Committee to come before you this winter or spring to make a recommendation. And then the Recreation Center, and this is a change from last year, but not in terms of the general fund, it has zero funds proposed to be expended in FY twenty-four. And that is, I think we had, we had anticipated ramping up design this year, and that did not happen. So at the moment, we have zero funds for the Recreation Center. The CIP Reserve Fund has nine hundred and sixty thousand in debt service. And so that is moved, moves into the Fund two eighty and then is spent from two eighty to service the debt. So it's enlisted in both locations, but it's the same money just moving around. We'll also anticipate spending about five million on TIF district projects and just over one million on TIF district debt service. And what is happening is that we pushed off our major payments for a long time, five years for each issuance, and then at the end of that five-year period, we begin to make principal payments. And so we're starting to enter the time during which we will be making principal payments on the first debt that was taken out in twenty seventeen.
Where is the art installation?
Well, that's a big question.
Designed for?
We're actually asking Recreation and Parks and Public Works in January to give us some ideas.
Oh, okay, is it glass?
Uh, it's acrylic.
Acrylic?
Yes. And we all received the memo from the Public Art Committee asking for ten thousand dollars as opposed to five thousand dollars, is that? Yes, so, so what the Public Art Committee has done in the, for this year is that they had accrued five thousand, and then, so they're, they're using the five thousand and this year's five thousand to make a ten thousand purchase, ten thousand dollar purchase.
Oh, so it's not an additional five thousand dollars that they're asking us to add into the general fund?
They're, they are, they are making a request that the, rather than five thousand, that number up there for FY twenty-four would be ten thousand.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But five of it comes from FY twenty-three?
I'm sorry. That was very confusing on my part. So in the, in this year, if they make a recommendation to you in FY twenty-three, it would be for twenty-two and twenty-three.
Twenty-two and twenty-three, sorry.
Yeah, so that was not, not clear, so.
That's cool, looks like a butterfly.
It's faces, it looked like faces. I'm sorry.
Was it faces?
I, I think they're somewhat abstract.
Yeah.
Okay.
That looked like a butterfly.
Yeah, maybe.
Or a flower. Okay.
All right, so this is a summary of our debt management. So we're, we are receiving about six hun, six hundred thousand of TIF increment, expected to from our TIF district. The debt service would be one million. Our transfer to reserve is eight hundred thousand recommended, and the city share of debt service, meaning for this building, is nine hundred and sixty thousand this year. Oh, it worked, sorry. Okay, got a little too fast. So our capital improvement FY twenty-four plan, I think you've heard a lot about these, Garden Street, Williston Road, streetscape, the walk-bike bridge over I eighty-nine in City Center Park. We're, we're working on moving them towards construction, so probably looking at the spring of FY twenty-four for some of these. Possibly the City Center Park, we can accelerate that, because that has no right-of-way acquisition in that project. And then obviously the walk-bike bridge, we're really at the design stage, so that project would be completed more in FY twenty-seven. So looking more at the twenty-five, twenty-six range to complete construction for the other projects. And then we also, there are several projects that we've talked about a little bit, public art, recreation, that are in the administration budget. So the last CIP project that we haven't talked about is the landfill solar array. That project is over a megawatt of solar, electrical production from a solar array. We are currently receiving net metering credits from that project. It's owned by Altus Power America. They gave us a very attractive net metering purchase agreement. And after seven years, they will have received all of their federal credits from the project, and they would be willing to sell it to us, and that's part of our contract with them. So we will be, we recommend doing a feasibility study in FY twenty-four, so working with the Energy Committee and others just to understand the finances of, of the array owning it, then, you know, the net present value of the array if we purchase it and so forth. But that could have a big impact in two ways. One, it could in the short, shorter term reduce what is available to the Energy Revolving Fund from, from the, from the solar array, but in the long term, it could have a net gain in terms of value. So that's what we'll be looking at. Obviously, the interest rates are a little different now than they were when we first entered into the contract, so a lot of things to look at.
And currently, half of the solar credits go to the school. If we, if the city bought it, would that be the same? Or is that something under the feasibility study?
I think that would be part of that. But that's a great question, one, big open question, so. So which brings us to the energy, uh, energy fund, which is a revolving loan fund or, or a revolving, sort of, it functions like a revolving loan fund. It's administered by the city for city internal projects. And Lou Berzi, he's right there, but, put this together, he actually manages the fund. And so we just wanted to give you a snapshot of FY twenty-four for this fund. Most of the revenues do come from the landfill solar array. There are some funds that are coming from projects that it financed. So the stewardship fund, which I believe was lights, the hybrid car lease, police station lights in this building, the solar on this building. And then there are multiple projects that it will be funding in FY twenty-four throughout various departments, Public Works, Police. So both on the renewable energy side as well as the conservation and waterization side. I'm sorry, not renewable energy, but efficiency as well as conservation. And then, of course, we have bond issues in FY twenty-four that are proposed. So the, the remaining four projects for the TIF district, as well as the Garden Street Phase One bond. All of these are TIF district financed and are not, will, would not raise the property tax, would not result in an increase in property taxes. And they sort of further the interests of the city in terms of building a compact, a compact, walkable, pedestrian, bicycle-friendly downtown.
Uh, Tom?
I have to invoke my inner West Dom, just to confirm, though, that it will not result in a property tax increase, assuming the development occurs as anticipated. Because it's debt.
Yeah.
And what's anticipated is not a full build-out of every single available acre, correct?
That's correct.
I mean, I think that's good to point out.
Actually, I'm going to go back and just, I'm just going to name the four projects. And then when we do our next item, I will not. So Garden Street, which is mainly the intersections of Williston Road, Midas Drive, since I have a nice picture of it up there. Midas Drive, the realignment of Midas, White, and Williston Road, some tightening of Heinsburg Road and, and Williston Road, the area in between that, which is, all of which is Garden Street Phase Two. A streetscape on Williston Road between Dorset Street and Heinsburg Road on the south side. The boardwalk connection between City Center Park and Garden and Market Streets, as well as the east-west crossing over I eighty-nine are the four projects that the fifteen million dollar ballot question for TIF district financing would finance. So emerging issues, you know, I think equity has been a big conversation this year, and then we're still struggling with implementation. And I am on, on my projects, but I expect that to be a big focus for FY twenty-four as well as continuing in FY twenty-three, the solar array, which we just talked about. And then seeking out funding opportunities for the TIF district projects. And then, so FY twenty-four going forward, and especially looking past FY twenty-four, TIF district development, business districts in downtown, which might be City Center, but it may be looking at other business districts like on Shelburne Road. And then looking at our plans that have been developed, that sort of support community development, such as economic development and cultural planning, so. And, you know, that's, I think both of those are things that you, you are considering for next year. And then in terms of a spotlight, I wanted to highlight the gallery. We've been really lucky, one of the committee members has, has stepped down from the committee and stepped into the curator role really, really smoothly. It's an honorarium position, meaning that it's sort of like being a coach. You get a bit of money, but not really, doesn't really cover your hours. And has brought in some really great shows and has some great ones lined up. And we ended up in the, in the fall issue of Best of Burlington, so, which is kind of fun. But that was, that's been a really, a really, just a great way to talk to people downstairs in the, in the hallway and just interact with the public, so that's been nice.
It seems to draw a lot of people in.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think people come particularly to see the new installations.
Yeah. That concludes my presentation. Stop sharing, and.
So now we can move to ten, the tax increment financing district adopting a necessity resolution and declaration of intent and the need to bond for all these different things. And I met some people at illuminate who I, I told, they, they came over from, I don't know, Ivy Street or something, and they walked around, and I said, well, you know, you want to support, support the bond, because that will build a, a walkway across right to downtown. And they were thrilled. They didn't commit to voting for it, but they were, they thought that sounded pretty good, so.
Ivy.
Ivy, did I say Ivy, Ivy?
So this is a very similar series of votes we need that you just took for Bartlett Bay.
I have the language in front of me.
Okay, go for it. Oh, do you want to say anything about it? You're so compliant.
I actually, I do not, no.
Go.
I, I don't want to say anything about it, but I did want to point out that Article XX, which I would request that you consider voting on one that was provided to you today and not the one that's in the packet. And the change I have up, I actually don't have the change up. This is the new one, essentially where there's a B and it says Garden Street. It used to say Phase Two, this version does not say Phase Two.
So it needs to say Phase Two?
No, I don't want it to say.
Oh, you don't want it?
Yes.
Oh, this is what we want, okay.
This is the one that I would request.
Good enough, okay.
I.
So this would be the same motions you passed for the Bartlett Bay. Just to recap briefly, the resolution of necessity for City Center TIF District Capital Improvement Projects. That addresses the requirements of the statute, of Vermont statute. The declaration, that also incorporates the ballot language, which you have on your screen above you and likely in front of you. And the declaration is, is really just to comply with Treasury regulations. So we would request two motions, one to adopt the resolution and two to adopt the, the regular, the declaration.
Okay.
I move to adopt the resolution of necessity for City Center TIF District Capital Improvement Projects.
Second.
You good with that? Do I need to amend it with anything from the email today?
Were you reading the, the, the one at the bottom?
I'm reading the recommendation in your memo.
Um, okay, that's.
Okay, so that includes Phase Two out of there. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that motion passes.
I move to adopt the declaration of official intent of this, of City of South Burlington to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of indebtedness.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that resolution passes.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Nice work, good enough, okay.
Thank you, Council, very much. You just took two really big votes to put things on the ballot for Tommy Day, so thank you for that.
So it's thirty-three plus fifteen is.
Plus fifteen, yeah. Forty-eight, just under fifty.
All the work to bring that down.
Okay. Do you want, let, let's, why don't we take a quick five-minute break? Move on to item eleven, receive an update from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee and consider approving an, an update to the committee's charge. So Erica, you're going to share this with us?
Yes, I am going to give you a brief intro for those just joining online. If anyone has shown up here, I'm Erica Quallen, Deputy Director of Capital Projects with Public Works. I, for this agenda, I, on item, I am here as the staff liaison for the Bike Pod Committee, joined by a couple of our members here. The person who will be speaking for most of this is Havila Gagne, our.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, I wasn't looking.
Our Fearless Bike Pod Committee Chair. And she's going to be bringing forth a few things, the, that were laid out in a memo to all of you that you have in your packet regarding the committee charge change, which is an update to the charge that was last updated in twenty fifteen, when the name changed, due to their yearly safety and policy updates from work that they have been doing and things that they would like to continue doing. A very quick update on the completed Queen City Park Road scoping study, and again, talking about their support for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Planning Effort. And there will be one recommended action, like you mentioned, which would be to approve the amended charge, which you also have in your packet. So I will turn it over to Havila, who. Which you also have in your packet, so I will turn it over to Havela, who is online.
Great, well, welcome, thank you. You are on mute, Havela.
Yeah, I think I spent half my day on mute. Thank you for having me and uh my words of gratitude, thank you for coming to all these meetings and being on city council, like nine o'clock meetings are not really my thing. But here I am and here you are, so thank you. Um, I think the two main things that I really wanna spend more time on um are the safety updates. And on the um Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. Um, so I might, I'll do the, I'll get the quick stuff maybe done early first. Um, the committee charge change, that's really mostly a name change. Um, uh, we're not really into the parks, we're really into the path, I think that's what that's about. Um. Next is the safety updates, the, there's a subgroup that worked on all of the safety recommendations. And those are in your packets, I believe there are a total of fourteen items. Um, I think there are no bad items on that list. And I think we tried to put them a little bit in order of importance, but it's hard to pick. Um, I'm not entirely sure how I can be of best service to the committee for going through things, I think my number one thing is paint. Um, and budget for painting. Um, my understanding is that Burlington repaints all of their crosswalks and fog lanes and bike lanes and lights. Or um lanes every year, and we don't do that as often, and I think that would do a lot to help clue in drivers. And pedestrians where they're supposed to be and how to share, and that's one of the things that we hear back from. The community a lot is just road rage and um inconsiderate use of shared spaces. Um, speed limits, it'd be great to drop those down. Um, adding more signs, um I also want to highlight the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, so there's the little lights you push when you wanna use the crosswalk. Those have been updated, um twenty-seven out of the thirty-five that we have in the city, and that's been really wonderful. And the committee would also, we also wanna share that we've been very happy with. Um, DPW and they've gotten a lot done in the last construction season, I didn't wanna forget that. I'm not trying to show where else to, like I can go through and read all of them, but. That was the list we wanted to submit to you, let you know what we're, what we're working on and what we're thinking about, were there any questions on that part?
I think it's a great list. So we don't need to go through them, I read them all and um I'm a walker, so a lot of these resonated with me. Any other comments? Although I would comment, I did use the flashing light to cross um Dorset Street the other day. Cars don't, weren't very thoughtful about even recognizing. We were standing in the middle of the road waving so that they knew the lights were on. And by the time we got into the second two lanes, the lights had gone off. So these cars were coming at us and there was no blinking light.
Nolan Farm?
No, this was on Dorset Street. No, no, this was Dorset Street um down near um past the high school.
Oh, a- 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 for the, the old hi- city hall?
Uh, the one farther down, there's another one down there, I don't, I kinda don't know what road it is. San Remo Drive, I think, there's a, it was a new one, I said, oh, let's use this, push the button, it start blinking. And I'm watching these cars, so we gotta step out and wave. And the first car didn't see us, another car ignored it, and then finally we did get some people's attention, so they stopped. But by then we were in the middle section and ready to go across. And the cars weren't stopping, we realized that the blinking lights hadn't been on long enough for two old ladies to get across four lanes. Largely because you had to. Slow people down to let them know that the lights were on and we were crossing the road.
Yeah, I've seen that before with pedestrians, I almost feel like we need a pedestrian refuge or more clearly marked one, and maybe even one of the RRFAs in the me- in the median in between, just to give people a halfway point.
I know, I mean, it was just scary, cause I thought all these work well. Woo, no, and and the roads were slip, you know, it was snowy, so on top of that, they were.
There's a shameless pu- plug for that uh additional funding for the consulting services um around things like that, if there is a problem area. That goes through the prioritization, it can really be made sure that the right solution for the area. Is done so that you don't run into situations like that, um because.
Yeah.
Some things work really well in some areas and less well in others.
Yeah, no, and I like the way they're designed and they should work, I I, you know, I just think a lot of drivers are. Um, not as thoughtful, and I, I don't know what will happen on Williston Road. I mean, that's not four lanes, but it's three at least. Full lanes to get across.
Well, it is four between Heinsberg Road and Dorset.
Right, and even up to Staples Plaza. Right, right, yeah, so.
The current project does have uh pedestrian refuge islands on those Williston Road crosswalk locations that are in design.
That would be good, but.
So I do have a question, this is rec- these are recommendations, but they're not in the fiscal year twenty-four budget, they are, or are they?
That's, these are some of the more, um, some are more generalized around recommendations to move towards a more robust striping program. Um, and some of them are a bit more specific that need to end up like going through a bit of a study process uh at certain. Locations, some of them can be done through like the Regional Planning Commission, the way they provide technical assistance over the years, so some of these. Can kind of be picked away at in the study and determine, uh is it the right solution for that area? Uh, so, and some of these are uh just things to consider as we move into new construction in certain areas. To say this is um an area that the committee has flagged as a good location for a crosswalk while we're here. Paving or repairing the sidewalk, um is there a way to bring these in? Uh, so these are more of their yearly lists that get brought forward as part of their charge. Um, and things that are incorporated as they can be and as funding allows, but also. Uh, but also serves as recommendations for us like uh improving or increasing the shared use path maintenance. The Bike Ped Maintenance Line item comes from the recommendations from the committee to say. Uh, that there are problem areas that don't get addressed in a timely fashion.
Do we need to take any action on this list of recommendations, or it's just for your information, city council?
Yep, this is the, what part of their charge is to report yearly on their uh recommendations in this area. And part of their charge also, I need with a member of the committee roughly quarterly to go over things like this also. Great, thank you.
I like the speed limit review because we still have, well, we, Dorset Street is thirty-five from. S- I think it's uh Swift all the way to Nolan, but there's a little sign that says forty going southbound. So we we need to get that corrected, it's, you know, in the spring, I think, when the ground is is uh not frozen, so. Cause we, remember we were reviewing the ordinances recently and that was pointed out and, you know. People, they see a forty and they go, that's forty-five, fifty and.
Oh, right, yeah, and the state, if it's a state highway, it's, you know, if you're ten miles over the posted speed limit, they sure don't wanna reduce it.
Yes.
This might be a segue to, I saw Bob Britt's hand was up, but I'd love to hear either Havelay uh or Bob talk about the Spear Street Widening Project. That he brought up earlier and also overlaying that with the plans for a paved path that would be off of the road. That would also connect from Swift down to uh the stretch of Shelburne, do you have any comments on on that topic that came up earlier?
I can only speak briefly to it because I mean, my tenure here has been short so far. So I was not necessarily clued in on the conversations of how that project arose, I know that it was part of the Spear Street Corridor Study. And that was one that fell under the Highway CIP because it was primarily roadway related, even though it was. To improve facilities for bicycles and pedestrians, it was very much a highway effort. Um, I am, I can't give you a reason as to why it's not included in this one, I don't know about conversations around that one. Um, obviously, the shoulder is really great for cyclists that are going to stay on the road. And if there are no paths or sidewalks, it makes pedestrians feel a lot safer, gives them someplace to be. So with a uh potential shared use path moving forward as we continue to uh. Bite off segments of uh Spear Street and Dorset and Heinsburg as we move down those corridors. Um, there will always be the fearless cyclist that will stay on the road regardless of shoulder size. But the need for pedestrians might um be alleviated and would be met by a shared use path. Uh, so I'm not sure necessarily about the long-term conversations that happen there.
So I think um, I think I'm now the most senior person here who remembers that co- that comment from Bob Britt. Without Andrew and Ashley and and Justin here. Um, I, we spent a lot of time this year with the CIP trying to smooth it out and make it logical and and rational of a ten-year plan that we could actually accomplish. Which meant things came on and off of it, and I think in that smoothing, it likely was smoothed out. So if that's something that the council wants us to put back in, um it's not one that immediately occurred to me as one that had been smoothed out. Uh, we certainly can look at that and bring that back to you in in January with budget if that's something you're looking for us to do.
One possibility is the next paving schedule for Spear Street, right, would be a logical time to have the engineering or the design work ready to go. So they could do the widening and add more asphalt if that is all it takes. Right, so, but I don't know when that would happen, cause I can't, I thought they just did it like. Five years ago? From Swift all the way to uh Pheasant Way? Nobody remembers, okay.
One thing I do remember it being done.
So I think the question for council is, do you want us to go back to the CIP and edit it?
I just wanna note one thing and what was included in the FY twenty-three CIP, I just pulled it up and what. Uh, the section that's being discussed a bit more here is that this um FY twenty-three CIP. Has it going all the way from Williston Road to the Shelburne Town Line, so it covers that whole stretch in a total to. Almost three point three million dollars, so um I think that is probably where the smoothing came from because it was two point six of that in one year. Um, so.
Was not correctly changed. Bob, why don't you go up to the mic, cause you do have the um most history with this. Is the, is the mic on? And then just for the audience.
Thanks, Bob Britt, um member, Vice Chair of the um Bike and Ped Committee. Um, what happened last year is we moved it forward, but it was also discussed that. It was supposed to be just from Swift because of the paving that happened on Spear from Williston to Swift. Williston Road to Swift, that section was fine, and we are building a path along. That section from the Forest Service Building down to Swift Street. So that was basically under control, the problem was from. The, from Swift Street to this, to the uh Shelburne Line. That does not have adequate shoulders. And we were, all we were looking for is that section to be widened so that. When you walked from South Point to South Village. With two feet of shoulder on one side and a culvert on your other side, you could get there safely with cars. Exceeding the thirty-five mile uh an hour speed limit. Um, you know, to get to Common Roots or to get to the new proposed soccer field that's gonna be down there. So it's not for vehicles, we need to have traffic calming. Put into that design when that road is i- is widened. Um, so that we keep cars going slower, slowing them down, but we need that for people to get to neighborhoods. We, in in South Burlington, we have a bit of a problem when Shelburne Road is forty miles an hour. Then, um, you got Dorset and Heinsburg which are now, you know, forty-five in Heinsburg and forty on Dorset. We need as a community to take back our neighborhoods, it's no longer that we have pass-through roads. It's not Heinsburg to Burlington, it's going through neighborhoods. And it's time for us to start looking at each of our streets and saying, we're gonna retake them.
Yeah, well, we did try with Heinsburg. But that's um, but that's a state highway and it's still fifty miles an hour right in front of my house, and then it goes forty-five down past um Butler Farms.
And and it's funny because we just recently had a scoping of a crosswalk at DuBois and Butler Farm.
My god, I know.
And and uh the results of the comments that we got back from the consultant is. It won't meet the warrants because. It's too fast of a road, but it won't meet V-trans warrants because it's too fast a road, but they won't let us slow the traffic down.
Right.
It's, it's, it's absurd, and it's again because transportation used to be just the vehicle, now it's complete streets.
But that's probably a state or agency of transportation issue on how they determine. Um, you know, speeds on state highways. That that used to be highways with nobody living along them except a couple farms. And now they are residential with bikers and and children and stuff, so. You know, you you might wanna look at that, cause it is antiquated, I was talking to someone in transportation and. She threw up her hands and said, I know, it's just crazy.
And Megan, in the answer to your earlier question about wh- what would we like you to do with the list?
Mm-hmm.
It, it would be really helpful if you blessed some of the changes somehow, I don't know what, when I say blessed, I mean. Uh, basically say, we agree with these changes. Um, some of the projects are in motion, they already have penny-for-path money to put in the remaining eight. Uh, R- RFBs to redo them, to to upgrade them, we already have the funds set aside to put a solid barrier. Um, on Dorset Street so people don't use the wreck path when they're going up Grand View or go or turning right on Kennedy. Um, which, which uh trucks and uh pickup trucks tend to like to do when they're trying to get to do their right turn and, you know. Um, and get past the the traffic. Um, on uh on Dorset Street, so we have, those funds were already approved and, but they just haven't been. Built yet, so, so they don't need to be, tho- there are monies available for them that have already been approved and. In prior um CIPs, but they just need to be built. Um, but some of them, you know, we will need funds and some will be funded by penny-for-path. And um, and some are just, you know, paint that's in the um. That's in the uh DPW budget.
Well, I I very much like the list, so.
Yeah, could you um maybe illustrate the list with um, you know, some notation? Could the committee do this, that this is in the works? Um, so we kinda look through this, I mean, it is two pages or two and a half pages. Um, so we can focus on, oh, this isn't done yet. It's, it's a, sounds like a logical, um, or at least it's, it's something that committee feels is important. Um. And 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 hasn't been attended to or hasn't been funded or whatever. That would be helpful as a a statement from the committee for me to look at it and say, okay, I get it. These are done or in the works and these are the high priorities and need to be done. And then we can talk about if there's funds for them.
I wanna make sure we just like close the loop on the Spear Street Widening before we get totally back into the other things. If it is the wish of council, we can redo the cost estimate from Swift to the Shelburne Town Line if that is. Uh, the wish of council, because we obviously have the longer stretch that was estimated out last year. But if you want the Swift to Shelburne Line, we can look at what that would cost and see how to. Spread it out over future years so that it doesn't cause that big shift.
Yeah, I think that would be great to have it stretched out over. Yeah, I think that would be great to have it stretched out over, you know, get the price and then we can figure out how to pay for it and when. Cause I, I think that's a, that's a really important road for cars and people.
Yeah, and I'll work with, I'll work with Martha to make sure we're not putting huge impacts on future years and can do that strategically.
When we bring that back to council, let's not just put it in the CIP, let's call it out as a, as a thing for them to consider in advance of January seventeenth.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be good, thank you. Okay.
All right, how are we? Um, I think, yes, I think the last thing. Oh, let's see, I'm really, I was skimming to the bottom. Um, the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, that was a request that came up through the Climate Action Committee um, as one of their key requests that we can support the, the function of that committee in helping people get out of their cars and choose other modes of transportation. So um, I think we're gonna be going forward with that. And then um, looking, skimming at the bottom of the memo, I think the last thing we really needed was just to share um, Queen City Park, we recommended a shared use path. Um, there's a whole project, it's in the scoping study. They give you a couple of different options about what the um, construction looks like for that. And we felt like the shared use path was the best for the low-stress users. Um, and is pretty consistent with the standards that we would look at in South Burlington. Um, there was just the request was for us to make a rep, uh, a choice and to pass it on to city council. So that's what we're doing here. And then I think, I think we just need, I can, we just need um, approval city council for updated charge.
Well, you gotta vote at home. A big support. Okay, so I'm not clear about the Queen City Park issue quite at the moment. But we certainly can, um, I am clear on you renaming the committee in your mission and goal. So if the council wants to agree to that.
I'm to approve and update the committee's charge, is that the?
In duties.
In duties.
That's the document, correct?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, do you ready?
Oh, we call them charges for all other committees, so I would.
Charge.
It's the mission and, they've labeled it mission duties, but it'll be the committee's charge, updated charge.
Committee's charge, okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
So we've updated your charge. And then um, I guess I'm not certain, I think we gave you some good feedbacks on your list of fourteen. But I wasn't quite certain where the stuff on Queen City Park is. I mean, there was a whole report. And what is it you want the council, what do you think the council needs to do with the report? You're, you're, there you go.
Yeah, so I don't know if anything else I need to do. I think, um, sorry about the dog, he's just a tall dog. I think you didn't really need to do anything about it. It was just, I think, be aware of it and that we had seen it. That was what, that was a request from um, whoever presented it to us, I think it was the scoping study. Most of it's in Burlington, not as to do with us.
It is almost Burlington, so they're gonna go for the money. So do they need us to say, or maybe just the Bike and Pet to say, this is, looks like a good design? I'm turning to Tim, cause he was on the committee.
There, there were like three proposals, I don't know if they actually picked one yet.
Oh.
You know, so.
So I've been in a lot of conversations lately with Burlington DPW around this project and figuring out where it falls on our CIP to fill in our sections there. And they recently secured a V-trans grant for their section to finish designing construction of the shared use path. So they're moving forward with that as the preferred design. Uh, so since they are moving forward with it, it does help us when we go to seek funding for our section of path on that, which is in our CIP currently. And um, at that point, we will likely need council support of this as the design that you'd like to move forward with. But at this point, there doesn't have to be any formal um, approval of that as the preferred concept.
And and like it said, it doesn't include the bridge. The bridge is still the big question mark.
Right, the narrow one-way bridge.
That is Burlington.
Walking or, well, I mean, you can, but if you use a king, you're stuck. All right, so the only part in South Burlington is where D'Attilio Sanoco is, right? I'm looking at this.
The right-of-way, the right-of-way through this whole corridor really varies. The um, city lines move back and forth along the road.
Along Queen City Park.
Depends who has current claim to the right-of-way, because the road is often split. The parcel line falls in the middle, but the right-of-way varies across whose uh, is what. Um, so we definitely have the four hundred feet between Central Ave and the bridge. And there are sections later on connecting to Shelburne Road that um, are also South Burlington.
Okay.
And and the signal is complete, that was done last, like, spring.
Okay, thank you. Well, good.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Um, I just wanna recognize Erica. She has been incredible, she's been here six months?
It'll be six months on January fifth.
Six months, she has gotten more done in six months than we had gotten done in the last three years. So I, we are blown away on the committee with.
We're gonna run out of money though.
So.
Cause you get so much done.
Also incredibly good at writing grants.
Oh, good, oh, good.
We did allow in the vote that we could bond, so we can move as many projects forward as possible.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
That's very nice, thank you. Okay. Well, thank you both. Okay, we'll move on now to item twelve. And this is discuss and possibly approve a proposed encampment policy. So Colin, you're gonna take us through that?
Absolutely, good evening, uh, Colin McNeil, City Attorney. At your request, we brought forward a, the document that you have in your packet, um, policies and procedures relating to encampments. Um, and you consider it for the first time on on November twenty-first. Uh, during that meeting, uh, we took some public comment and had some discussion. The largest takeaway we took from that was that um, in instances of um, a situation where a campsite is removed and the city is storing personal property. Um, the original draft that, of this policy, uh, included that we would store that property for a week. Uh, based on the comments and discussions, we've, uh, in the draft that's now before you, we've increased that to thirty days. Um, also since the, the November uh, twenty-first, when we, when you first reviewed this, we've met with Community Outreach um, and got some in, input back from them. We also met with Public, Department of Public Works to see, you know, citywide if this could actually be a workable policy. Uh, Community Outreach gave us some comments which are reflected in your, uh, the documents in your packet. One, we gave you a redline version and a clean version. Um, Community Outreach really uh, um, highlighted that instead of offering alternative shelter because the shelter does not belong to us, it's more identifying shelters that um, at that request, um, law enforcement uh, can go with them uh, when they're um, meeting with people who are in encampments. Um, and also that the notices that we provide is subject to the rules of the uh, shelters that we're, we're notifying people about. Just in certain instances that, that we were aware, Community Outreach highlighted some situations. For instance, with the hotel voucher program, uh, that sometimes when you're offered a hotel voucher, it's a yes or no at that point. And if you refuse it, um, it's gonna go to the next person in mind. And then you go to the bottom of the list. So it's, um, it's not a window of a period where this, where that option's available to you. And in some instances, it's, it's a, here's, here's an option for a place to go um, at the state's expense or the, at the government's expense. And then you have to say yes or no. So um, those are the changes that, that we made to the policy document that's in front of you. Um, we have been made aware that there's some, um, have been some questions raised about whether a policy is appropriate or whether an ordinance is appropriate. Uh, just for things to think about is, is one that the, uh, you're, you'll be aware that's, um, from our last meeting, we based our policy largely on what Portland, Maine had done. They based it largely on what Tacoma, Washington had done. Both of those communities operate with a, with a policy, um, with an ordinance similar to ours. I understand that um, thou shall not camp here with a policy to, to how to administer that. Uh, that seems to be by talking to those, those communities, or at least the Portland community who represented what Tacoma had told them, the policies that they've adopted seem to be working well in their communities. Um, in the structure, similar structure that, that we've adopted. Um, and I, I believe that as far as I know, uh, locally, that um, although Burlington has talked about implementing an ordinance or adopting an ordinance, they'll start, they'll still, they are still operating with a policy uh, and not in, have not yet passed an ordinance. Um, I think it might be in, in committee somewhere, uh, there was talk of, of adopting an ordinance. Um, so that's one reason. Uh, another reason is that if you have a policy, you can, you can adopt it now. Um, it doesn't require a first reading, a second reading, the public hearing that requires an ord, an ordinance does require. Um, you can really put this in place. Um, this is a, uh, a new idea for the city, so it's gonna have some kinks potentially. Um, it's a lot of words to, to implement and, and put through with a lot of workmanship between the various departments. Like the Police Department, the Public Works Department, how it works out. A policy allows us to have some flexibility. Uh, if something's not working, we can come to you in a meeting and say, this isn't working, can we change it? Um, and you could change it right there. Um, that would be different than what's included in ordinance where if you're going to change it, you need to go through all the steps that are, that are called for in the statutes.
And, uh, Colin, if I can just pause you there for a quick second. I would just remind the council that this, this um, came about, this was something that had been on your priorities and strategies uh, for about, well, since we, about eighteen months. And it came to the top of your agenda because of an emerging issue. So we were trying to be very nimble to an immediate community need. Um, a policy is the quickest way to get there and protect the liability of the city and, and, and mostly respect, primarily respect our residents. Um, and that's partially why the policy, we identified the policy as the best course forward and allows us to try something new and change it quickly on the fly to both be um, responsive to what staff needs, but also more importantly to what our residents need.
Excellent, thank you, Jessie. Um, and then maybe the fourth reason I would give is that generally, um, with, with the document that's in front of you, you're, you're essentially directing staff how you'd like them to act. It is focused on city staff. Um, and that's generally what policies do. You're looking internally with a policy to tell uh, the people that work for the city how you want them to behave and how you want them to act. With an ordinance, it's more out-facing. Um, just generally, you're telling the community at large, this is what our laws are in our community and this is what we expect from everyone. As opposed to, um, so just generally speaking, because this looks inward, um, that's why we came up with a policy instead of a, a set of an ordinance. Um, so um, that's essentially it for now. I mean, I can walk through the, the policy again if you, if you would like, just some general outlines. But it's um, with those minor changes, it's the, it's the policy that you looked at uh, on November twenty-first.
I, I don't think you need to walk through it unless someone, I mean, maybe someone wants to specifically hear about um, a particular issue. I um, I mean, Peter Taylor raised with me and sent, I think all of us, an email. Or did you just send it to me, Peter? Yeah, I don't, okay. Um, concerned about the impact um, or how you carry this out in the cemeteries. Um, and so I wonder if, Peter, do you wanna just briefly describe this, he's a sexton, chairs that committee? Um, can you share your concerns and then maybe Colin, you can either address them like it's covered here or we can think about um, adjusting it a little bit.
Thank you very much. As you know, uh, we, city has two cemeteries, Eldridge over by the airport and Shelburne Road. Shelburne Road had, I think, three tents removed in the spring, early summer. And two cars were using it this fall as a place to overnight and park.
Parking ladder in the?
No, in the back. Driving all the way to the back of the cemetery and parking way in the back, uh, where we clean brush to kinda open it up a little bit. Um, it, as I read the policy, and this may be an old one, not the new one, but you have emphasis areas. And I think seven point two talks about emphasis areas. And um, I guess I'd suggest you add cemeteries in there. So it's clearly known that uh, campsites in cemeteries can be removed regardless of any other conditions. Maybe in the last line where it says uh, uh, special concern including schools, playgrounds, facilities for the elderly or cemeteries or in cemeteries. I think that would do it. I, I'm just concerned that it, Shelburne Road's a nice place to put a tent up. Uh, and it's tucked in the back and there's curb cut and you can drive in there. And uh, and I think it's inappropriate for people to be living in there. Particularly with the efforts we put in to spruce it up. Any other questions?
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes. Clarification?
The language doesn't specifically um, exclude cemeteries in any way at this point in time, right?
Right.
You, you would just wanna add that to like part of the emphasis description?
I, I'm thinking, I mean, help me out, uh, does that accomplish what I wanna do? I just wanna clear that cemeteries are part of an, the emphasis, rather than just leaving it open. That it, if it's not specified in here, I think it should be.
All city-owned land is governed, would be governed by this policy, right?
Yeah.
Right, so that includes cemeteries and parks.
Yeah, but a lot of people may not know that a cemetery is city land. I mean, a lot of them are specific religions that I, I, I don't know who owns them, but.
But all city land is covered by this. But emphasis areas say that you can remove encampments regardless of any other conditions from emphasis areas. And that's why I, I think cemeteries should be included in that, that section.
Colin, can you comment on that?
I, I, I can, I, I think that um, Councilor Barrett has, has raised somewhat of a point that this covers all city property. It doesn't specifically mention uh, cemeteries as, as written. Um, but it, it could if um, if it's a the way, uh, you know, the way a pol, the policy would work into place is if an area becomes an area where campsites are existent and that have become a problem, those could be identified as emphasis areas that could be posted. Um, a cemetery could work in the same way if it, if it has become an, an, an area that uh, campsites have arisen that have become a problem. I think that um, what is being requested is there's the section seven, which talks about campsite removal prioritization. Um, which identifies um, the removal of campsites may be prioritized after an inspection of campsite locations by city personnel. Um, so based on certain impacts, it, it, we could add cemeteries to the list at the bottom of seven point two. Um, and uses of special concern including schools, playgrounds, or facilities for the elderly. Um, a cemetery could certainly be in there for, for an area that would be looked at as a, as a priority to, to focus on if, if they become problems.
And living in a car would, would constitute a campsite?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd have to.
I mean, that was your experience, these people were living in their cars.
Driving during the day and parking one car and traveling in the other one, coming back at night, going someplace else and then coming back a few days later.
Sleeping in the car at night.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, is that covered with the language that we have? I mean, they talk about tents and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, it doesn't, you know, as I'm looking at it, it, it does talk about tent, lean-to structure, tarp pallet or makeshift structure used for purposes of habitation located in identifiable, identifiable area. If someone's using a vehicle, I believe it could follow to that definition.
As long as that's covered, that's fine. I'll, I'll just add, you know, I, I don't know anything.
I'll I'll just add, you know, I I don't know anything uh about what I'm gonna say other than what I've seen, which is. People sitting in electrical vehicles and plugged in for hours and hours and hours and hours and hours, but sitting in the vehicle. Um, you know, and I leave here at night and they're sitting in the vehicle, so I don't come back to know what's going, but. I uh and it just as another, I see all of the affordable housing people here and thank you, um, is this morning on the radio, they were talking about, and I wish. I could go back and listen again, um, a city in California, um, you know, that instead of paying much more on police, fire, hospital. Um, and all different kinds of services, they provide, you know, six hundred dollars a month to someone to be able to stay in their house. Which adds up to a lot less than police, fire, hospital, and all of these different services. Um, and the apparently President Biden's administration is looking into it, so it might not be a local solution, but I I just it's curious, I'm curious to know. Where are these people, you know, what their history is? Do they live here in Vermont and they couldn't pay their property tax, or they couldn't pay their rent, or they? It would just be, I think, you know, I'm just, I'm speaking to the Affordable Housing Committee people as well. Um, and to know exactly, you know, I know that there are apartments here on this street as well as in the new um two buildings. So one building, sorry, over in the um hillside that are gonna also have units for for homeless. And I just, I I'd really like to understand, you know. Just like, you know, the the traffic lights, the the radars are there, it's much more economical for us to put up radar and saying you're going over the speed limit as opposed to having a police officer sitting there and enforcing. The speed limit, right, cuz people enforce themselves when they see, oh, I'm going ten miles over the speed limit, I better, I better, you know, tuck, take it down. So I think it's an interesting question. Um, you know, something that other countries do, and I know that in this country it could be anathema to some people to think that. We'd help people actually stay in their homes, but when we think about paying for police and fire and hospital, all of these other services. Um, the public is paying much, much more. So. Anyway, I just thought I'd raise that and um and just let you know, I don't know what's happening, I don't know what's happening in our parking lot overnight. Um, and and I also think to Peter's point, the way I read it. I I would add cemeteries, and I realize that that means that we have to come back to another meeting to approve this policy.
Um, no, we don't.
No, we don't.
We could just approve it without.
We could amend it, the policy.
Could amend it, or we, you know, you have a couple of different options.
We're already amending it, yeah.
You could approve it as is, um, and then we could look at how the how the best place cemetery is in here. Uh, and come back to you and you could amend it next time, we could amend it on the fly right now, uh, and you could approve that. Um, so a couple of different options that you have at this point.
Mm-hmm, because there there is, we have some uh responsibilities was kind of my my understanding, having worked with the Sextons. This past summer, we have responsibilities as a community with regard to how cemeteries are are upkept and so it makes sense. Um, okay, Tom?
So, yeah, I'm not opposed to the cemetery language, uh, but I I'd love to consider that at a future future meeting, and I appreciate that you spoke right off the bat to the difference between the ordinance and the policy. Um, so the council approving tonight this policy, since it's a new policy so that we can get some experience with it, is not saying we we don't support. Looking at making an ordinance in the future, so I support having this be a policy tonight, and I also support looking at this becoming an ordinance when we get more comfortable with it over the coming year. Uh, so that's where I'd be on moving this forward.
Okay, are you opposed to inserting cemeteries in seven point two as like? Um. I don't know where it goes, but at the end.
Prioritizing.
Yeah, okay, including schools, playgrounds, cemeteries, or facilities for the elderly? Just inserting cemetery? I mean, I don't think we need to come back to see it printed, really. Good, okay, is that amendable to everyone?
That's fine.
Uh, further comment?
I just wanna say, I I I appreciate the work that went into this, um, and the fact that you that it was pulled together from from other communities that have 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 uh faced the same challenge. And it's it's respectful, uh, it provides for alternative um uh places for people to live if they're available at that time. But it also seeks to to strike that balance between um people who live, uh, you know, next to city land where somebody's encamped. And there are uh some hazards, you know, related to that, so um I think this is a good place to start.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
From here.
And the other aspect that we spoke about last time is that um in the intent of this is not to criminalize encampments or or houselessness or homelessness. It's really to find alternative placements for people and use the resources that we have to to find shelters for people that are um. If it if it becomes a problem in the city, not on city land.
Okay, Sandy, you wanted to make a comment?
Sandy Dooley, and I'm not speaking as a member of the Affordable Housing Committee, I'm speaking as someone who's lived in this city for fifty years. Um, first, I wanna thank you for changing the period that people can retrieve their property from a week to thirty days. Um, the thing I wanted to emphasize is that I s- from my perception, it's the level of protection that you're offering to people who. Whose only home is an encampment, they are essentially without conventional housing. Um, and um. I, one of the things we've been looking at is our is what we wanna have in the housing chapter, comprehensive plan, and there's no mention of people without housing in it now. And I had looked at actually Portland Maine's um comp plan, and it talked about homelessness. And so I'll just mention in response to Megan's question is that a high proportion, at least in Portland, are people with serious sub- substance abuse problems. And and many have mental health um challenges and many have both. Um, so um. That's probably what you'll find out um here in Burlington too. And the other thing I would just mention is um this issue of people um to a certain degree finding themselves without housing is is a product. Of our housing crisis and not having enough housing, especially not enough affordable housing. And also, I do think the opiate crisis and our um much greater. Challenge uh relating to that uh has exacerbated the problem. But what I just wanted to say is. I think of the level of protection that people have depending on their circumstances. I, as a a person who lives in a house, happens to be a homeowner, or if I rented, if the police wanted to enter my home. Without my permission, they would have to have a search warrant. And in order to have a search warrant, they would have to prepare um the reasoning why they needed to to search that uh my home. And they'd have to get a judge to approve it. So I, fortunate me, who is not without housing, has the protection of two branches of government. The executive branch, police, and the courts. Um, but if I were homeless. Um, that's why I think an ordinance is appropriate, because you have no protection of the law without an ordinance in terms of if something goes wrong. And in terms of. Justice and equity, I I believe that an ordinance is the uh appropriate way to um. The context within which these procedures should be adopted. I do like um Tom's suggestion of having the policy now and then moving toward ordinance. In terms of frequency of change, I'd be interested in how often the cities you communicated needed to um. Amend their policies, but um I also, I'll have to research, I generally rely on the accuracy of BT Jigger. But they said that the Burlington City Council had adopted an ordinance in February. Uh, because the court had said that a policy had no standing and nobody could go to court on the basis of a policy. To seek to have some redress or court intervention if they found that the uh policy hadn't. The procedures had not been accurately um. Uh, well, there was the attempt to um operationalize them. So I guess I, you know. That's where I see it, it's it's what level of protection does someone get in this society, in this community for their home? Whether that home is an encampment. Or if it's somebody's house. Thank you.
I'd rather spend six hundred dollars a month to let them stay in a house with four walls and heating rather than. We have them give have access to our court system. Um.
I think there was availability of six hundred dollars if there was housing court.
Right, oh, yeah, oh, I agree with you, but sometimes they have to leave their house cuz they can't afford. And it's coming back a little bit, but it's people who are coming, you know, who are transitioning out of prison or out of foster homes. Um, that they tend to be very vulnerable, and there was a third category that I can't remember. Um. Sorry?
Domestic violence, probably.
I wasn't on this morning's report, but I'm sure, I'm sure, yeah.
Okay, well, that we're not gonna solve all that with this policy change. But we are potentially gonna give the the police and first line. Um, male health workers um a framework um for how we wish them to treat these individuals and how you go about.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Getting them to a safer place to live. I mean, it is safety for them too, I don't think these encampments are um. A particularly safe environment.
Right.
From what I've read.
Right.
I mean, maybe the couple living in their cars, that's different, just the two of them, but they're still subject to. You know, potential violence or somebody else um hurting them.
Mm-hmm.
But uh it looks like we have one more person who would like to speak, and then I'd like to, if that's, if there's no one else at home, then I'd like us to. Um, move on this with those amendments.
Thank you, uh, Chris Trumbly, sixteen Duwa, um, speaking as a uh resident, not a member of the Affordable Housing Committee. Um, I I just wanted to share this snippet from the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council. Um, homeless encampments are highly visible and trouble, link reminders of the housing crisis in our country. Encampments occur because there's a pervasive lack of affordable permanent housing in our communities. Um, the city council's made some uh great um progress towards uh helping uh in in that uh area for South Burlington, whether that's um. Some of the uh cost units at Summit Properties or um some of the ARPA investment they've made on uh Williston Road, so thank you for those contributions. Um, this is gonna be something, I think Sandy alluded to, that uh we didn't see it captured in the comp plan, so it's. Uh, we're particularly, um, I think as a community, focused on the point in time survey that's gonna come out in January and kind of really understand like. How about is, has this um developed? And uh with B RAP money expiring, um, and folks, uh, you know, there's some some anxiety about um how am I gonna afford a place to live? And having that stable housing. Helps them avoid being a person who's experiencing homelessness. When I attended the um the housing conference, a speaker um clarified that it's, you know, you're not talking about homeless people, it's people experiencing homelessness. It's it's a point in time, they've, maybe they've fallen into a situation where they fell into that and, you know, they didn't have that support structure that I think uh Megan was trying to articulate. And just that housing is is that stability piece. Um, so look forward to uh future collaboration, I would like to see this evolve into an ordinance. Um, the difference between a policy is, sounds like it's the right time to get something uh moving forward. Uh, but thank you, um Senator Chittin for expressing support for a future ordinance, that's um. Having protections for folks who, there's nobody else here to speak for them, and um, you know, it's not very often you see. Um, somebody experiencing homelessness, whether it's a UVM student living in their car, um, or it's a, you know, um, somebody who's falling on rough time, they got nowhere else to go. Um, sometimes they don't know where to go, so um, thank you for that, thanks.
Thank you. Oh, so Noah Hyman would like to speak?
Yeah, hi, um, I just wanted to uh to take a moment to thank everyone for making so much time and putting so much energy into this. Um, since um um the orientation for me in the State House. I've started to get uh emails now from people, and I'm actually getting a lot of emails about people. Who are about to experience homelessness or trying uh to negotiate to be able to stay in their homes. Um, I'm reaching out to um Vermont legal assistance programs, trying to get people help. And I'm, it's just, it's a very important thing, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you all for um putting it in the forefront here, that's all.
Thank you. So are we ready to um adopt this policy with the one additional? Um. Wording to include cemeteries in the list of places of emphasis? I'll move to approve the proposed encampment policy with the addition of the cemeteries in uh section seven point two?
Second.
Okay, you ready for the vote?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes, so the um policy is adopted, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Uh, item thirteen, continued first reading on another ordinance to implement education impact fees and set a public hearing. For a special meeting on January twenty third at six thirty P M. Sweet Paul Connor, and we are overworking Colin. Just enough, right?
I'm here already, it's great.
His earning is keep, yeah, okay.
Howdy, folks. Um, so as discussed last month, um, you uh asked us to make a couple of changes. To the uh draft before you warrant a public hearing. Um, those are incorporated in here, those include a few typo corrections. Um, clarifying or being um stating that affordable housing is defined in the city's land development regulations is exempt. And um the council wanted to see an adjustment to the way in which um any administrative fees are recouped. And so um staff's proposal in there would be to replace what was the four percent of the school impact fees with a straight hundred dollars per permit. Um, which uh would apply to any individual permit, whether it's for a commercial building or a single family home or a multiplex just across the board to cover the. Administrative costs and potentially uh it would be eligible for um funding future amendments to the impact fee ordinance, though it's not a huge dollar amount that would be brought in. So it's more likely to cover mostly administrative costs, so.
Just a one clarification, so it's it's a hundred dollars for any um.
Right, so that would be a proposed change that, or any permit that would trigger the use of impact fees. So if you're getting a deck, then you wouldn't be doing, you you wouldn't, most of the permits that we issued don't. Trigger the use of impact fees, so what would trigger the use of impact fees would be an expansion to a building. Um, or additional um or in the commercial side, a change of use that created more trips, so if you went from.
So this hundred dollars does not um doesn't get attached to the school impact fee or any other fee? It helps fund your department?
It, well, it's not necessarily our department because a lot of the cost is born citywide, so it winds up being in the finance side.
Okay.
Um, and the communication back and forth to school, so it it, you know, goes to the general revenues, but it's an acknowledgement as uh. As Jesse was describing at the last meeting, that there is an expense to the city for doing it. You could choose if you like to apply it just to the school impact fee, um, for the administrative costs of that, but um, what. We propose is that it applies to anything triggering impact fees.
The impact fee.
Any impact fee, yeah, yeah, whether it's police or school or whatever. Yes.
Just by way of introduction, sorry, I should have said that, we're beginning, Jonathan Slayson from RSG is online as, is Tim Jarvis. The superintendent is not available tonight, but Tim is here on Harst, in Harsted, if you have questions for them as well.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from anyone, all right? So I guess I would entertain a motion to set a special hearing on January twenty-third at six thirty P M. Um, to.
At six thirty?
That's what it says.
That's what it says.
Mm-hmm. Could I?
Do you want to change it?
No, I want, so this is a special council meeting, this is the night of the steering committee meeting where we pass budgets back and forth. So the idea here is that you would hold a special council meeting for the sole purpose of this public hearing and possible action on this ordinance. Um, immediately before you held, held the steering committee with the school board. So the advantage of that is the school board would also be here, it's an educational thing, um, and you would do no other business that night other than those two things.
So that, that's the motion we want.
So moved.
Second, hey, any discussion, you ready? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Good job, Tim, he's a troublemaker.
He is, okay. Uh, number fourteen, um, opportunity for councils and the public to share information and resources. Resources on climate change. Any update, all right? Any other business? Always making a mess. So um, I would entertain then a motion that Tim is going to read. Um, about a executive session to discuss pending litigation.
So I have a motion. I move that the council make a specific finding that premature general public knowledge of a discussion of pending civil litigation. To which the public body is a party, would clearly place this public body at a substantial disadvantage.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. So I now move that the board enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing, discussing pending civil litigation to which the public body is a party.
Second, all in favor? Aye. And we will not be coming back into session? Oh, we didn't invite anybody.
Uh, bringing into, I'm sorry, uh, Jesse Baker, Colin McNeil, Amanda Lafferty, and Paul Connor.
One more thing to sign. All agreeable? Yes, okay, thank you.